We're being recorded today. We will start off with Vice Chair.
First thing on the agenda is reorganization of the board. We do this once a year whether we like it or not. So for that case, do we have a nomination for Chairman of the Board?
I would actually propose that we table this until next month when we have our new member present.
Are we allowed to do that?
We've kind of have waited.
We did it last year.
Yeah, I think we did too, that's actually.
Because I think the timing of it is kind of odd when...
I agree with you.
And this is what I brought up, this is what I brought up the last meeting too, that we really should wait till...
I agree with you, gentlemen, but it's the law. It's your bylaw. Until you change the bylaw, you have to follow the bylaw. The bylaw applies to this board and says that you have to reorganize after the election or the first meeting after the election.
And I agree with you too.
Wouldn't it be the first meeting after the new individuals are seated on the board? What would be the purpose of...
It actually, I mean, maybe we should read the bylaw.
Oh, the town election?
Yes, the town election.
What we should probably do in the future is to change that.
Yeah, it's a bylaw. You're asking the people here today to follow the bylaw.
Right, but the bottom line too is that we had three people elected this year. And I do agree with you and I do agree with, that we should do it too. That maybe we should hold off because we do have a new member coming. And I feel that that's important too, so...
So your advocacy of variance on the bylaw.
I know, exactly. I agree.
Sticking our finger in the eye of the bylaw.
I would really just rather get it over with, but then there's that little part of me that says, you know, it would be more responsible, the right thing to do if we waited because the new member may vote a different way, so...
So Andy Burbine's new member, but he's not coming on until July. I mean, can't you have the reorganization again in July? It takes five seconds.
How many times do you want to reorganize the board though? I mean, that's just...
My point is that it's, every board has to follow this. Every board has to follow this and you can't be choosing what bylaws you decide to follow and what you don't. Did you find it, Andy?
Yes, it's 17-3. There's, it seems to be no...
Do you want to follow the law? Do it now and then again when the full members' board is sitting here.
That sounds good.
Okay, because I really kind of would like to get this over with instead of delaying. So I think we will just continue. Was that a motion?
I made a motion to continue until the next...
You want to withdraw it or do you want to...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna do this, get it over with. As you said, it is the bylaw. I personally would have rather waited for the new member to come in, but I think we've kind of, we've kind of waited too long.
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Negreli as Chairman.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nomination for Vice Chair.
Nominate Mr. Mullen for Vice Chair.
I second.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now it's done.
It was five painful minutes.
I know, but it still, I feel bad about the new member not being able to do it, but then again, we'll go by the bylaw. Okay? All right.
You happy now, Mr. Bergen?
I am content.
Okay, that's all that matters. That's all that matters.
All right, next on the docket is approval of minutes from April 12th, 2018.
I make a motion to recheck the minutes of the April 12th meeting.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Present.
Before we start tonight...
Don't we have meeting, do we have minutes from May or, I don't, did I not get them?
No, those were, I just put them on the desk.
Oh, we do have May, true, right?
Yeah, but you...
We didn't have time to read them, so...
Right. Okay, before we start, I just want to do something here. John's leaving us after, what, six years, John?
Yes.
We just want to give you a little something.
Oh, God.
And did you want to read it?
To John Shepherd, June 14th, 2018, Town of Abington's zoning board of appeals and the Abington Building Commissioner want to express their appreciation for the years of service you've provided to the town. Recognize the commitment you have made to the town through the many meetings you have attended, the time put into researching the town zoning bylaws as well as mass general laws that pertain to each petition that has come before the board. We also appreciate your willingness to serve on the signed bylaw review committee. Your countless hours assisting in the building department have definitely made an impact and have been much appreciated. Your efforts were instrumental in getting the fee schedule updated, which was no small task. The Abington Zoning Board of Appeals and the Abington Building Commissioner recognize John Shepherd for his dedication to the Town of Abington, always striving to do what is in the best interest of the town. We'll miss you at our meetings, John. Signed, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Thank you again, John. All right.
All righty, it being after seven o'clock, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the continued petition of Glenn R. LaPointe Family Trust and Diane C. LaPointe Family Trust, 245 Central Street.
Oh, the extension.
Are you changing the...
Oh, actually, okay.
I'm halfway through.
No, sorry, sorry.
And I'll recuse myself again.
Sorry about that. There you go. Sorry about that.
Oh.
Yep. Give us one second, please.
This just in, hot off the press. We have a request for a six-month extension from 500 Chestnut Street from Peter Fiori.
Mr. Riley?
Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. I think you know Peter Fiori's been in front of the board in the past. We submitted a letter to explain why we're here under Section 10 of the zoning bylaw. If you remember, this is regarding 500 Chestnut Street. Mr. Fiori has received permits from this board. The frontage variance was the first one, and we also received permits for the build a planned commercial development. We've received site plan review. We're kind of moving along well on our way. However, the first variance, that first one that you granted for the frontage variance was done in December 2016. Then there was an appeal at the time, which kind of told everything by statute, and when the appeal is dismissed, then the one year starts to pass. Frankly, we thought we were already going to own and be building the property, but due to a number of factors, we think it's going to happen more at the end of the summer. However, since the one-year statute applies to variances, we need to request that that December variance, which would expire in June, be extended with the board's vote for up to an additional six months. We think we'll be closing probably within the next three or four, but to be safe and not have to come back, we'd ask for a vote of a six-month extension.
And how many extensions can you have?
One.
One, okay. I believe our town lawyer looked it over, right?
Yeah, and questions with regards to which was provided to us, the dismissal and the apparent and appears to be necessary. And counsel advised that not, the law is ambiguous with regards to this, as suggested in a letter by Attorney Riley, and you could proceed upon this and grant the extension. At his own risk, there is a potential if somebody wanted to litigate with regards to the non-notification of letters and the newspaper, but it's not, it's very ambiguous in the law, so I would proceed as if it had been notified and the risk is upon the applicant.
And did you want a copy of, did you need...
I have.
Oh, you have a copy of the...
It was just provided.
Okay, great, excellent, all right. All right.
Would you have time at this point to notify?
No.
No.
It's not required by statute, he's right, and we've, it's never been required in any hearing that I've ever been at. So I'm confident you're all doing the right thing.
And basically, this is one time?
Yes, exactly. Right.
Happy to make a motion on that. Do we have to open it to the floor? Is it, it's not really a...
It's not a hearing. Yeah, that's what it said. It's not a hearing. Yep, exactly, correct.
So, on the request of Attorney Riley for Mr. Peter Fiori, 500 Chestnut Street, request for a six-month extension, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's actually some discussion on Beacon Hill to extend the time here for variance because of this problem, so that may see that happen next year or so.
Okay, thanks.
With my apologies to Mr. LaPointe, the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Glenn R. LaPointe Family Trust and Diane C. LaPointe Family Trust, 245 Central Street, Abington. Special permit under 17521A to allow multi-use, multi-family use and variance under 17514 to allow more than one principal building and zero Brockton Ave., property located on Assist's Map 3, lots 4752 in the highway commercial zone.
Zero Brockton Ave., let's see, is subject to system development fees. And must be paid prior to building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Carter. I have worked for the Russell Wheatley Company. I'm here with Glenn LaPointe Senior and Glenn LaPointe Junior regarding a project that we have gotten a continued hearing on, on Brockton Avenue in Abington. As you know, at our last hearing, we are here to discuss obtaining a special permit for multi-residential and a highway commercial zone and a variance for one, more than one principal building on a lot. We discussed this, we discussed it in detail last, at the last meeting about the paper streets being a hardship for us. The angle of a lot to the street line makes it difficult to situate the buildings in a manner that is different than what we, than what we have. There is a wetlands issue, and also the fact that although we're in a highway commercial zone, I don't know if I passed these all out before, we are in a highway commercial zone, but as you can see, our lot, our lot is highlighted in blue. The lots that are highlighted in red are actually commercial properties, and the remainder are all highlighted in yellow are all residential, single-family, multifamily condominiums. All residential. That being said, through the discussion and the public, and with the public input that we had, the public was all very much in favor of the residential use. We had Mr., I think Mr. Batson was here. He came up with some pictures and explained his situation. We always know that the commercial and residential is always a flashpoint because, you know, people sit in their backyards and they have a commercial property right beside them, they generally, some of the commercial properties aren't kept as nicely as others, so I know he had shown some pictures, he had some pretty, he can have a very good view of it from his The boards were not in favor, the boards in general, the boards in the town are not in favor of buildings running perpendicular to the street line, so you got to see the side of the building, so hence, this is why we came up with this concept of putting a building fairly straight to the, fairly straight to the roadway and then, and then adding, adding two other buildings to the rear so that we could gain our, you know, so we could gain our nine, well, at that time it was 11 units when we first moved, when we first did this, but the chair had, Mr. Negreli had offered, he had a hard, he had a hard time with looking at it, the density of the property with the 11 units, so we went back, we looked at, we looked at the site, and we came back, we cut it back by, by two units or 20 percent. We knocked 20, we knocked 20 percent of the buildings out. We knocked out about eight, about 14 percent of the impervious area on the site. So it is, we have tried, we have tried to make it as, as, as appealing as possible for you. We also added the, in the center of the parking lot, we added a turnaround for ambulances or trash trucks or whatever, so that when they do leave, they can, they can leave facing out into, out into Brockton Avenue. There again, as I said, the impervious areas, now that we've reduced it, we've reduced it from, although they, the 11-unit building actually did conform to the, to the percentage of coverage at, at the, at the worst was 54 percent. I think you remember, we did bring in two different, two different versions, the one big building with 11 units and then the other one had a three unit in the front with two, four units in the back, and that, and they were both in the area of between 50 and 54 percent of lot coverage. With this that you're looking at here, we're down to a, to a 40 percent, 40 percent of lot coverage with the building and the parking and the sidewalks. So I think what we've done is, is we've looked at it, we've looked at it with you in mind. I think that the variance that we're asking for as far as, as far as residential, I think is, I think we've shown that we do have, we have, we do have a hardship. You could almost flip it in the other direction, thinking of if you didn't get, if you didn't allow this and you had to put commercial in, it's going to be a hardship for all the neighbors, the neighbors in the area because they're all in residential houses and you got to plump a commercial, a commercial, a commercial project in the middle of them. I think myself personally, if it had been looked at, they probably would have, because of the majority of the lots in this particular area, they probably may have thought of stopping the highway commercial at Mill Street and creating an 20 or an 30 zone down to the Brockton High, Brockton Town Line. That's just my feeling. They didn't, we're in a highway commercial zone, so we are asking for the special permit for the highway commercial, for the residential on the highway commercial zone, and we are also asking for the variance for the buildings, for the residential, for the residential buildings. I mean, I think it's, I think when you look at it, when you look at the renderings that were done, I mean, I think it's going to be very, I think it's going to be a very attractive, a very attractive lot when all said and done. You know Mr. LaPointe and his son, they do first-class work. I mean, it really, it, I'm sure, I'm very confident that it'll, it'll look really nice.
Okay, when, we have to look at this in a certain way, so I'm going to look at it as the projects that have been proposed, projects that you've done, and when I look at this area, and I did look at the area, I'm not going to walk through the woods of course, but you're right about the residential, there's a lot of residents. The people that have written and approved this idea, if you will, all residents, there's no commercial, there's no nothing. Although unlike other projects where we had people from different businesses saying, yeah, great project, this project right here is set in an area that is residential, it is, when it comes down to it, and you have a lot of residents that like the idea. Personally, I didn't like the first one. It was really congested in my mind, especially when I look at the project that you just, and you're in the process of doing now, where you have three units putting into that area there. This is a bigger area. So I like what you've done here with the, with the nine units. It's given more space. It's...
We took that into consideration.
And it's, and it's more safety-wise, it's not everything jammed in there, and I do like the residents, and again, I say they're residents, they're not business owners, that like this idea, and looking at the property, I can see where you can see where it would be residential-based, but then we're still into that variance part, so I'm going to let the other guys have a conversation here. Do you want to, do you want to say something, Bill?
Sure. I appreciate the elevation drawings, because that always helps us...
Yeah, I thought that was pretty, you know...
Visualize.
Says a lot.
And, you know, basically, you get three prongs of, to touch on for the variance, and the variance is specifically about multiple buildings, I believe, right? It's not...
Correct, correct.
And, you know, in looking at these renderings, you know, the overhead...
Right.
And, you know, you have, what, basically, you're just a hair under an acre, right? It's 42,000 square feet, so you're just under an acre. You know, and to have, in my mind, to have something like that facing Brockton Street, Brockton Ave., whatever.
Brockton Ave.
You know, I just think, I kind of like the project where I think it makes like a little, a little neighborhood, and, you know, so when I look at the hurdles you have to overcome, you know, it's size, shape, and topography, well, you have an acre, but it's, it's long and narrow and it's skewed at, you know, whatever, 38 degrees, 40 degrees. To, in my mind, to not request a variance at all and just go after a special permit, then you're looking at one continuous building.
That's correct.
And I think in that case, then you're, you're breaking up the townhousey, neighborhood-y look of it, and then, you know, the third one is what you're offering. Didn't we tell you to silence?
You did, I thought it was, I thought I had to, I thought I ran out of juice.
I'm teasing.
Like school.
Always something, always something, it's all right.
The third one is, you know, I feel, you know, especially now that it's scaled down, that what you offer is a better selection, solution than a continuous building that would look more like just, you know, an apartment building. In my mind, I think you've satisfied the three hurdles for variance, but I'm only one vote, so...
And those are?
Which is, again, shape, topography, it's a long, narrow lot.
Okay.
So it's not all frontage, it's a little bit of frontage and then it goes back, what, almost 400 feet, 380 feet. So I think that, and since what he's asking for is to be able to break the building up, the buildings into multiple buildings, I would rather see something like this when I drive by than a single building.
Did that, did that pass in the town meeting? I'm sorry. Anyone know if that bylaw passed? Did that bylaw pass, that you have to have the buildings facing towards the road?
I don't remember.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have copies of that, do we?
Yeah, I have everything that's put in the book. Well, what bylaw was it?
It was frontage, I think it was something on the frontage that the buildings couldn't be, be...
I'll check it.
But I would, you know, I think as people drive by, there is a building that was recently permitted to basically go lengthwise, and, you know, until the landscaping grows in and everything, it's not, it looks attractive in one direction but not so attractive in another direction, and, I don't know, I just, I'd rather see that, I guess, going down the road than...
Than one straight.
Than the end, or just a long block of a building.
So the bottom line, you're trying to make it look better than, than, like Bill was saying, a long, straight building.
That's the reason for asking for the variance.
Right.
Aesthetically, to try to make it look better in the neighborhood.
Instead of putting them all together.
Exactly.
Instead of just big row buildings.
No, I mean, I'm good. I think that, based upon the shape, I mean, I think this rendering helped because based upon the shape of a lot, you can clearly see that this would not work as one continuous building. So I think, and I think the, reducing it from 11 to nine has alleviated a lot of our concerns with respect to the special permit and overdevelopment of the lot, so.
Do I want to add?
I have no questions.
Nothing?
No.
Marshall, you anything to add?
No, just here to answer questions.
Okay.
The floor.
Let's open it to the floor then. Anybody, sir?
How was you at the last meeting?
Yep.
And showing me this here, and I'm...
Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
15 Wall Street.
Thank you.
Across the street from the project, and I think this is very attractive, like John's court here, you know, at the moment, it's very attractive. I think this is the goodest thing, and look like, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody else? Okay, we'll close it to the floor. Again, I have an issue giving out a variance, sorry, but, but the more we talk about it, the design that you have, it's, it's a much better design, and sad variance part that's sticking in my head, but Bill brought up a couple of interesting things, would you? What do you think? Pass it on?
Yeah, I mean, I think, like I said, you know, the three checkboxes we need to grant the variance, I think he's satisfied in my mind, which is obviously shape of the, of the lot. They created a hardship, and then I would rather see a neighborhood design such as that than just one giant building there. And so that would be the, is what he's offering. I think it's, not to grant the variance would be more detrimental, because then his option would be just to put in a single building. I just don't think that would have the visual appeal.
See, I think we have an issue too with this being highway commercial, because, again, I have to, I have to mention that, you know, we have turned down condos in a highway commercial, and that may be coming back, so we need to be careful with this, but again, I want to stress the point that this was never really a commercial place. This was not a commercial, it is highway commercial, yes, we see that, but...
But a zoned highway.
When we look at it and you have the people come in, these are all residents that are coming in, these are not business owners. Also, you have, you have an area that is, it really is more residential than highway commercial, which is commercial. The whole area, when you look at it, when you drive around, there are some businesses across the street in different areas, but as we push this way, it's more, it's more residential.
Yeah, if you go from Mill Street, if you go from Mill Street to the, to the town and city line, it's all, it's all residential.
Because now, we could be, we could be, if we accept this, we could be stepping in some mud here because we have turned something down in a highway commercial. So we have to keep that in mind, too.
True. If you're concerned about that, it's possible to investigate, although it's, to avoid the variance but comply with the law, connect them, and I don't know what would comply and constitute connecting. I'm sure this case law with regards to it, through a footing or a knee wall... I'm sure this case law with regards to it, through a footing or a knee wall, concrete knee wall, underground, you're not gonna see it. Or to take it even a step further, it might be a canopy connecting between walkways and buildings or something like that. I don't know what would qualify.
Because I think, I think we have an issue that could come back to bite us on this one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, actually, in the highway, in the definition of the highway commercial, it talks specifically about permits and a variance for building residential. It's within the actual paragraph of the bylaw. So the actual bylaw does foresee that you would actually do residential. And you mentioned the three, you know, factors that we have to hit for a variance, but there's a fourth one, and it's that the relief is without substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying the intent of this bylaw. So there is no detriment to the public good. We've already worked out that the circumstances are to topography, right, for the variance. There's no substantial detriment to the public good in this case on Brockton Ave.
That's true.
And then it doesn't nullify the intent of the bylaw, because that particular bylaw, which talks about highway commercial, does actually have a phrase that talks about residential. And that's why we're here today, because you're actually using that to ask us, can we put in, so you're not nullifying that bylaw. That's very different to the last issue, and you're talking about a project that was on Route eighteen.
Right, yeah. Well, I just wanna cover our ends, because we wanna be smart about this, because we don't want this to come back to bite us. Is there any way you can connect these underneath, or is that a possibility?
I can, I can connect them, it's not, it's not.
I know, we want the, we want the style you have here, it's perfect.
It's fine.
But is there any way that we could get away from a variance? That's what we're asking.
I could.
You'd have to.
I'd connect, I have to.
You have to find out what qualifies. I'm sure this case law, this is the first time this has happened, that it is more appropriate to do what's proposed here, but without, and Dennis is correct in speaking with regards to the residential, but that's not the, that's the special permit. The variance is multiple buildings on the lot, which is what the chair, I believe, is concerned with.
Yes.
And, yeah, you could agree to continue the meeting and check, and check with counsel case law with what qualifies as connecting, that you won't be seen, whether it's a footing or whatever it is, and then come back and see if you can make this work without granting something that you don't wanna grant.
Especially after we have turned down a highway commercial.
Multiple buildings on a lot.
We wanna cover ourselves on this, and I must say that this is, this is a really great project right here. The variance part is what's kinda kicking us a little bit. We're not saying we don't like the projects on this one.
Well, if I withdraw this again, and then come back in, I mean.
No, just continue.
Continue.
Continue, but I'm losing, I've already lost a month, I lost two months now. This is the third month that I'd be losing. I can connect the buildings underground, with a footing, I can build it, I can go the long ways and just continue the whole thing, and then there's no variance.
I know, yeah.
You know? I mean, I think we're doing the right thing here.
You did do the right thing, it's great, it's excellent.
See, I think.
I have to ask, too, I mean, who are we talking about? Who here are we talking about that carries a risk? Is it a risk of the petitioner? I don't think it is. Nobody's gonna challenge the petitioner on this project. Is it, are you worried that somebody else has kinda come to the zoning board and say, "Look what you did, and you didn't do it on our house, and so we challenged that"?
Well, there's always that.
You know what, they can do that. That's what, you know, that's what laws are for.
Every application stands.
But I just wanna let it know that this is, this is a different scenario, situation. Where is mostly residential? We're not fooling around here, this is, this is not really, when you look at this from the top, from the side, from, it's more residential than highway.
It's unfair to ask the petitioner to carry the cost and time, just because you're concerned that somebody's gonna be appealing this. You know, this is a zoning board of appeals, it's a regulatory board, you make the decision, you don't make the decision, you live with it.
But the bottom line on this is that we wanna make sure that everybody knows, and you know, and the other people know, that this is, to us, this is a different project. We would rather not give out the variance. But again, like you just said, what Dennis just said, it is time soon for you. So what do you think, Bill?
I'm, I think that this particular project is substantially different, not only in its location, but in its proposal, from the one you're referencing.
Well, I just wanna make that clear.
And that's exactly the point of the zoning board of appeal, is where, that's why we sit here, to make that judgment, where, you know, there's a highway commercial three miles away that's totally different than a highway commercial here. And it was our opinion that that previous one is best suited for commercial property, but I feel it's our opinion that this particular property is best suited for residential use. So I'm happy to make a motion on this. Does she wanna add anything else, sir?
No, I mean, just as I said, every application stands on its own, I mean, there was other concerns about that project, including the density that they were trying to do it. Route eighteen's a different creature than, you know, what they're proposing, so, I mean, I can see a lot of differences between the two.
And again, we really don't like to give out variances. That is one thing that we try to stay away from. But again, Bill brings up some good points about the shape of the property, and it wouldn't look nice if it was all together. It really, and I understand the building inspector's opinion, and I appreciate that, too. But again, like you just said, you've already come for us twice, so maybe we've been hitting this around enough, so we should make a decision.
I think also we should recognize that the petitioner has drastically cut back, because you came with eleven places, and now you've come with nine.
Yes.
You know, you heard what you talked about, about the lot, and a lot of buildings, and has come back. I mean, that's gotta be to a cost, right? But you did that, to work with the board, so.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Glen R. LaPointe Family Trust and Diane C. LaPointe Family Trust, 245 Central Street, Abington, for a special permit under 17521A to allow multifamily use, and a variance under 17514 to allow more than one principal building at zero, Brockton Ave. Property located on Assessors Map Three, lots forty-seven to fifty-two in the highway commercial zone be approved, per plan submitted.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was not an easy one. Great job, looks really good.
I'll talk with the building inspector, and if we can find a way to connect it with the foundation, then I'll.
Then that'd be great.
I'll do it.
That would be excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Being after seven oh five, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Mary Bridget Bell and Mary B. Bell, 535 Groveland Street, Abington, for a special permit under 17532I to legalize in-law apartment at 535 Groveland Street.
Okay, and this has no bearing on the storage system?
Hello, ladies.
How you doing?
How you doing? I'm Mary Bell, this is my daughter, Mary Bridget Bell. We recently purchased property on 535 Groveland Street with an in-law apartment, and just wanna legalize that into our name. I was contacted by one of the members, who told me that we didn't need to do this, because it was already grandfathered, but we'd like to make sure it's put in our name.
I think he was correct, I think.
Yeah, we researched it with Marshall, Billy Inspector.
As I was going through the application to prepare for the meeting, I looked at the street file, and this, an in-law was created prior to the requirements of in-law apartments in our zoning bylaw. This was, which was February seventh of oh five, I think, off the top of my head. And this was created in nineteen ninety-nine, clearly, and it's even on the certificate of occupancy. So this is a grandfathered in-law that follows the property, does not expire upon sale of the property, and does not need an annual report. They bought that when they bought that three-five Groveland Street. You could open the meeting and find that there is no decision necessary, and close the meeting, and they own it. They can ask for trash barrels, and I'll approve it.
But just to clarify it, though, that, when you said forever, if they change the use of the building and they knock it down and start over, that's.
Oh, if they abandon the use, so you can do that.
So it wouldn't come back automatically?
That way, you own it, you bought it, it came with it.
And every year, you have to fill out a form?
No, they do not.
They do not.
Oh, they don't, because, that's right, I'm sorry.
But it is, it is an in-law apartment, who would be living in it?
I live in it with my husband.
Oh, excellent.
She's got the better end of the deal.
All right, so by the bill inspector, what would you like to hear now?
Just grandfathered.
Can just.
I'll say that decision is necessary.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
And there's no decision necessary, it's grandfathered, I'll close it here.
Okay, anybody wanna do that?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We got a vote on it.
Yeah, we got a vote on it.
Yeah, go ahead.
We gotta make it a little formal here.
Does it have nothing to add? You want to open it to the floor?
Thank you.
No, no, I don't think so. We're gonna have to open it to the floor.
What is a public hearing technically?
No. There's no need to have any.
Right.
It exists.
It exists, it's grandfathered in the story. So we just have to.
She could withdraw.
That would be the best.
But you can withdraw, that's perfectly fine.
I guess I withdraw it.
Okay, accepted?
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the applicant's special permit.
Second.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Shakya Mooney LLC, 150 Farm Street Dover, for special permit under 17538E to allow nine-foot wide parking spaces at Ten Railroad Street. Property located on Assessors Map Fifty-three, Lot 117 in the CBD.
Hi, good evening, Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, representing the applicant, and the owner of Ten Railroad Street, the former New England Art Building, and historically the former Crossed Shoe Factory in Abington. We're here tonight for the sole purpose of a special permit, actually, to allow the construction of a parking lot with nine-foot wide parking spaces. Typically, it would be a ten-foot wide parking space, but because this is a preservation of a historical building, in the central business district, a special permit is all that is required in order to allow the nine-foot wide spaces. And just so I can show you we're all on the same page, this is a copy of that part of the bylaw, and I highlighted this for the record, and also to show that historically, there's a picture of the building.
Wow, it's much bigger, huh?
No, same, well, relatively the same size, I think there might be part of one wing that came down. I'm guessing.
I am.
So because this is a historical building, the board, we would seek a special permit, the owner is renovating this historical factory building into residential units on the top three floors, and a mix of residential and common areas on the first floor. The first floor would include up to eight units, the property management office, things like a library and reading area, exercise, yoga room, a common social room, and art gallery area. The existing paved parking lot contains angled spaces, most of which are only about eight to eight and a half feet wide, that's the existing parking on site now. There are no parking lot islands in the present layout. The new owner will install new parking lot islands with trees and shrubs, the parking spaces will be repainted with nine-foot wide perpendicular spaces and twenty-five-foot wide aisles, and I've submitted a copy of the layout plan to you. That layout plan, the site plan, has already been approved by the planning board for the town. The central business zoning bylaw encourages the reuse and renovation of historical and architecturally significant buildings, and further allows for modified typical design requirements by special permit from the zoning board. Approval of the special permit will allow the owner to construct a hundred and forty-two off-street and tree-lined parking spaces in a much safer layout than the prior, or existing parking lot layout, with wider spaces than what are existing on site right now. I think you might, you received correspondence from the police and fire chief, all right?
Yep.
If you'd like.
Do you wanna read? Oh, you wanna read?
Sure, I mean, it doesn't matter, either one of us, but, okay. From John Nuttall, the fire chief, "The fire department has been working with the owner's architects for the Ten Railroad Street project, and while we've not yet seen the updated overall site plan for the entrance and egress lanes, at this point, we have no opposition to the proposed nine-foot width of the individual parking spaces, as they will allow for larger turning radius in emergency vehicles." I have copied Attorney Riley on this to keep him updated. Since that, he does have the final site plan, which you guys also have. The fire chief, "We've been working on this project since November of last year. I've met him out on the site on more than one occasion, everything has been put on the site plan the way he wanted it, he had us change some of the driveway entrance widths and all, and he had asked for the wider aisle widths, which don't exist now, so that's all been implemented at his request." Also, the police chief sent an email. "I have no objection to allowing the parking spaces at the building previously known as New England Art to be nine feet wide instead of typical ten-foot wide requirement. It's my understanding this will allow more space for entrance and egress lanes, and will be beneficial to the fire department vehicles." Please excuse this email, because I'm using voice recognition software. "Sincerely, Chief Majenski of the Abington Police Department." The police and fire, again, have approved, have been part of this planning project, have no objection to the nine-foot wide. It allows us to have, to kinda maximize as much off-street parking as possible there, which we like to see in the central business district. And again, it being a special permit, there is no need for hardship here, it is basically a benefit to the area to do this. Also, I should point out, the town's engineering consultant reviewed this and issued his approval and recommendation to approve the site plan, which, again, was approved by the planning board. And finally, the town's traffic engineer consultant reviewed the entire layout, the number of parking spaces, and they recommended approval, which the planning board did approve. And just to give you a slate of what this used to be, this is the existing parking lot when the factory was in operation. That will be going away.
How many vehicles are in there, do you know?
Well, it's a hundred and ninety-five spaces.
How many, how many problems?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's what it used to be, a hundred and ninety-five spaces, with the eight and three inches, eight and five inches. This would be, there'd be a hundred and forty-two off-street spaces for the hundred and ten total, so it's one point three, which matches the building across the street. I know the bylaw says one space per unit, but planning board always requires more than that, so the one point threes usually, we try to get a minimum threshold. And the nine spaces allows us to do that.
Do you have a drawing of what it's gonna look like afterwards, or?
You have the site plan, you should have that as part of the submission.
Oh, there it is, yep.
So my question.
Were you done? Go right ahead, I'm.
Apologize.
We're just.
So in reference, Mr. Riley, you're talking specifically about this section, this parking lot area here?
No, it's, most of the spaces are gonna be nine. There may be just a handful that are ten, there's some parallel spaces.
Well, I guess I had asked, because under, you know, the bylaw, which Section E references the historic, E one says that this is allowed provided there's no decrease in the number of parking spaces. In some ways, you have to decrease, if you're running at eight foot now, and then you're going up to nine foot, obviously, you know, every ten spaces, you're losing a space.
Right, we're actually.
You're going the other way, right?
We're actually getting larger spaces than what exists now.
Right.
So they're eight?
But I was just, you had.
I have something to show you that, if you want.
You know, you had like, on the old locus, you had a, I counted a hundred and seventy-five, you said a hundred and ninety, and went down to a hundred and forty-two. So the angle?
Yeah, currently, they have, they use angled spaces, and they don't have the wider aisles that we require under zoning bylaws. So we have redesigned that to have the twenty-five-foot wide aisles, which don't exist now. So it's just safer, and we're planting trees in the parking lot where they don't exist now. And again, the town's engineer, the traffic engineer have reviewed it, and the planning board, as part of site plan review, has approved it. Now, nine-foot wide parking space is not uncommon, this town hall and library has nine-foot wide parking spaces, you're parking them now. The new school building has nine-foot wide parking spaces. And I can attest, because my daughter's taking her license test on Monday, the test for the kids driving now is to pull into a nine-foot wide parking space, a parallel.
Marshall, is that true? Marshall, is that true? That there are different sizes?
Yes, and...
It's not anything...
This is a good idea. The, for every, every nine spaces, you're going to get an extra space.
I see.
And the more spaces is better, and the nine foot is appropriate. Nine by 18, nine by 22 for parallel, which I don't know you have very many here, this is a good idea. I looked at it, I looked at the aisles, and that's what's required. I, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Bill, anything?
No, that was my only concern.
I was just curious, what qualifies as a historic building? I didn't see that defined anywhere. Is that the commission makes that designation?
Yeah, there actually is a historic commission preservation set, every town has one, and I happen to be in it, in the one for Abington. And they, we have a list of buildings. Now, there's actually only one building and one historic district, the historic building is the Abington Depot. So when you have a beer in the Abington Depot, you can be content and know you're having historic beer. And the Abington, what's it, the Island Grove is actually the historic district because there was a great meeting there, an abolitionist meeting. But we do actually have a list of houses and sites that were done really in, I think, the 1970s. Dr. Whitey and the team at then went around, and that's what the history commissions do, they go around and they take photographs and record these buildings and try and keep these buildings as they are. I mean, they don't have, you know, they try and change some of the buildings, like the Abington Depot, into historic buildings of the state.
Right, that's on the National Register of Historic Places, that's a national registered building.
So, so I do get, on the history commission, I do get requests asking, particularly for CPA when they're looking for money.
Right.
Is that, is that a historic building? And when those buildings get demolished, they actually do contact the history department, the history commission. And we can't actually, we don't have any bylaws or anything to stop them from demolition, but usually the owners are very kind and they let us take photographs and, you know, try and preserve something before the buildings, which are usually a danger anyway, are demolished. So it's, what's a historic building? I think it's literally, it's over 100 years, 100 years old in Abington.
The late 1800s.
It's, that's right. There is an actual list, a book. There is a copy that anybody can see in the library, in the Abington Public Library. You can go and have a look at it and see if your address is on that.
The Crossit Shoe Factory, which is the site of this building, Crossit Shoe Company built this building. This was one of the, a couple of shoe factories in Abington. Abington, for those who don't know, was, made the most shoes for the Civil War in any town. Abington was a huge shoe fact, shoe town, as was Brockton and Whitman. And you probably know, Whitman has converted their factory, shoe factory, into residential apartments. Rockland transformed the Emerson Shoe Factory into residential apartments, and here's where we are now. The Crossit Shoe Factory is being proposed here in Abington.
And so under E, what provision are you seeking relief under where it says...
Four, the last one.
Because two is specific to parking, but I'm assuming that provision doesn't apply with respect to the net floor area?
Right, those are options that can be applied by the planning board. The last one at the bottom is only, could be applied by the zoning board. That dimensional requirements can be waived by special permit if you're trying to renovate and preserve a historical building in the town of Abington, which this is.
Okay, okay.
John? My biggest concern is, again, I drove it again today, done it a few times. I'm concerned about Railroad Street itself, parking there, and I know you're going to say you can't do anything about it, people are going to park there anyway, but right now no one parks it. I've done it a couple of times, and the only ones that do is by the beer place. The same thing, concern I have is on Birch Street, is that, is there, and I know you've got some parking, that's going to be pretty tight on a few of those.
I can give you an update on that, John. There is no parking lot on Railroad Street. In fact, one of the approvals was, we're installing no parking signs along the railroad street, the railroad side. You're right, no one parks there now because there is no shoulder. They do park down near the, down near the cellar.
Yes.
But the fire chief and I were out there, and so we're putting no parking signs along there, so it's clear, even though they don't do it now, we're putting signs up there so they can be towed if they ever tried it later. And we've done a couple of things. Brighton Street, the neighbors asked us to have that entrance be entrance only instead of two-way, as it has been for decades. We agreed to that too. So the traffic consultants did a pretty thorough job. We had a 231-page report submitted, and then the town's traffic engineer reviews it, and everything's been approved.
And then my last thing would be, the width on, not all of them need to be nine feet, but I, my concern is that senior citizens like myself, as you get older, when you're turning in these nine foot, it gets pretty, not yet for me, but it does get...
What do you want to go?
I think there's... The right outside of the quarter, maybe an entrance there.
That, that amount is stipulated.
It conforms, yeah.
They will have to conform.
One, two, three, four, five.
Based on the amount that is required and the amount you have, there is a required amount, and that will have to be...
Right. This is, I'm kind of trying to go as green as possible. There's spaces that are reserved for electric cars, there's spaces that are reserved for zip cars, shared cars, to try to actually limit the amount of cars. The whole point of CBD central business is to have some mix of residents and business, so this is kind of, you know, bringing immediate customers to the North Abing, Abington Business District. And the intent is, they can walk to the depot, have something, or go to Dave Misby's, shout out to Dave Misby, to get the haircut, or Bemis Drug, you know, they don't have to use their cars. In fact, one of the leasing strategies here is, your rent will be lower if you don't need to park a car here, you know, so there's incentives for that.
So these apartments, is that correct?
Yeah.
How many units?
114.
There's 114 parking.
There is 100 and...
Could you get the please?
I'll get the breakdown right here for you.
Are you, are you taking away from the business area?
No, no, in fact, no. We're not allowed to use any of the business parking. The businesses in, haven't used the street parking. That was one of the critical things. I've talked to some of the businesses there. In fact, Mr. Villa from Martins was at our first hearing...
He's adamant.
Supporting this, very much in support of this property because it was customer base. And police and fire and all, we were talking about parking issues. Like I said, we've been working on this since November. But to answer your earlier question, 97 one-bedroom units, three studio apartments for on-site employees for maintenance, two two-bedroom units reserved for the owner, and then eight two-bedroom units for tenants. So really, it ends up being 100 one-bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units.
Okay.
So with your approval of the special permit, it would allow this preservation project essentially to proceed.
Any other questions, John?
Well, it's 110 apartments, and how many parking lots? 142 parking lots?
Spots, 140, 142 spaces for residents, but that doesn't include, we also have seven more spaces reserved just for employees, those are on the Birch Street side, and we also have two more reserved in a garage for just the owner, she's going to be living there. So there actually is about 154 spaces, but to be conservative, I counted only 142 for actual residents and then divided it up.
Well, let's be specific, shall we? So it was 142 plus seven, 147, eight, nine, plus two is 51, 151 spaces, is that right?
I am getting my notes, Dennis, let's see.
Yes.
Oh, okay, 142 spaces, seven for employees, two for the garage, and then there are three other loading zone, we label them as loading zone spaces. That's for people if they want to pull in and drop off the groceries or drop off a piece of furniture. That's where the shuttle van, they're also having a shuttle van to the T station. So, but we didn't count those in 142.
Okay, so we've got 154 places altogether.
Total, off-street. We don't have any on-street.
Is there any other parking places?
No, we don't have any, no, no on-street parking.
Okay, so we have 110 apartments and we have 154 parking spaces. And the members today have to decide in a special permit, three issues. They have to decide whether it's not injurious to the public welfare, whether it doesn't overload the public systems, and whether it doesn't create undue traffic. Those are the three points that you have to decide in a special permit. So I suppose my simple question to you, Mr. Riley, is where's everybody going to park if they have two cars?
They don't. They're one-bedroom apartments and studio apartments, and as I mentioned earlier, they have controls. In fact, one of the planning board conditions was each unit would have one parking sticker. If you come here and say, hey, I got three people moving three cars, you won't be allowed to rent there. There's management of the property, that's what a lot of these properties do with the factories. So it's self-controlled. If they're on the street, they get towed, it doesn't work for us.
So a couple, a couple that come, they're only going to allow to have one car?
Yeah, they'll be guaranteed one parking space.
So what about visitor spots?
Yeah, that's where the other 30 some odd are, are open spaces. And again, to answer your question about, you know, overloading or anything like that, that's where the town's traffic engineer specifically reviewed all of the intersections.
Well, we don't have that plan in front of us, do you have that plan?
I have their, I have their response letter, their, I'm sorry, their final draft letter.
This is something we could not read in one meeting? Are you going to continue the meeting if we have to take this?
No, we appreciate, we're only here to, as well as respects, we're only here to talk about the width of the parking spaces, really not like the, the traffic engineer's report, but I'm happy to present it to the fire request. This is the traffic engineer's final review, and I will also, just to anticipate, I will give you also the town's consulting engineer's final review, where he recommends approval of the project and the residential use, thus create, as it is known, to create a customer base for the downtown business area. And I'm going to reiterate, the police chief and the fire chief both support the nine-foot wide spaces because of the safety benefits that creates by creating, as you alluded, more parking spaces, wider aisles, and no street parking. This is designed for safety.
It's designed for safety, okay. So let us talk about the actual area that you are building in, right? So on one side is Birch Street, right, and that intersection there, and it's not one of the most dangerous intersections in Massachusetts, would I be right in saying that?
No, no, not one of the most, if you lived there, you'd say that. It's not one of the most, actually, it doesn't have a high, to be honest with you, it doesn't have a high crash ratio that some of other intersections in Abington do. However, I'll reiterate, the intersections are not part of this hearing tonight, this is about parking spaces.
No, love, this is the zoning board of appeals, we deal with safety, that's what we're doing. It's a relative, we're not talking about in, in size of apartments, of parking spaces, we're actually linking there how many cars are going to be on to park there.
And if I could continue, based on the planning board's hearings that we've had since November, the town's professional traffic engineer reviewed that intersection, okay, and all the other surrounding intersections. Part of our agreement, we offered, it's, the town owns the intersection, we can't go do anything to the intersection. So what we offered to do was to pay for a road safety audit to be done at that intersection, it's called an RSA. An RSA has to be completed by the town in order to then qualify for grant money to do intersection improvements. We offered to pay for that because the town has not yet paid for one. They're actually doing one in the next couple of weeks at the intersection of Washington Street and Adam Street, at that fork in the road near Shaw Avenue. You know what I'm talking about?
Are you telling me that you paid for the safety review? Is that what you're telling me?
We are, upon approval of the permits, we have it in writing as part of our conditions of site plan review, that we will pay for the road safety audit to be paid for. That's when they get the town, the local, the old colony planning council, and any of, any state officials, they all meet at the intersection, they do traffic study data, and they come up with immediate improvements, and then they come up with long-term improvements. We've also committed to pay for whatever immediate improvements are suggested.
So what did they actually come up with in, in the plans? What did they say?
It hasn't been done yet. It won't be done, it won't be done unless the project gets approved, because there's no, why would you do it if it doesn't, if the project doesn't improve?
So no safety plan has been done on this project at all?
The traffic data has been done, all, they did traffic counts, they reviewed all the intersections, the times, they looked at...
What's the traffic data then? Do we have that before us, do we, or the planning board?
The planning board has that, and the town's engineer, which we paid for their services, reviewed our 231-page report, had comments, the, our engineer then submitted updated comments, your engineer, the town's engineer then reviewed everything and then issued his letter recommending approval with the conditions that we pay for the road safety audit and things like that.
Okay.
So those things have been addressed, knowing how many parking spaces were there, knowing the nine-foot wide spaces, and knowing the number of units. That's all based on that information. So a professional traffic engineer has reviewed that and suggested the planning board support it and approve it, which they did approve the site plan.
So the professional, so they did all approve this, they said it was safe?
Yes, well, yes, they, I mean, obviously, no matter what you put into this bill...
Also, I need to know, I mean, I'm just asking you really where everybody's going to park, because that is something they have to decide. They have to decide if it's safe for the actual area. And so we're boarding on one side, I think, an intersection that's dangerous. And on the other side is this commercial district with stores, and some of the business people are happy with it and some of them are not. And presumably those that are not are maybe concerned that it's going to be parking there. And that's, I think, not a unreasonable suggestion because, you know, you have 110 apartments and you've got 154 parking places, so that's...
Right.
If a chap does have two cars, which I agree is probably unlikely, but if they do have two cars, then we're going to have a problem here in parking.
Not only, the owner would have a problem. You know, if, if the tenants come home at night and can't find a parking space, you've got a problem. People are not going to rent there, you're going to lose tenants. So that's why it's in her own best interest to manage the, the building and the parking area. It, it's what currently hap, always happens, you know, that's how you manage multifamily use or, used properties. That's what they're doing over in Rockland at Emerson Shoe. It is, again, the 1.3 has been something that we always strive for, at least 1.25 parking spaces, we have 1.3. Right next door, across the street on Birch Street, there's 30 units, I believe it's 30 units and 37 spaces. They're not parking on the street there. It's managed, it works well. But the size, the special permit to grant the nine feet allows you to maximize the number of parking spaces, to your point. If you denied the special permit, you would lose a good 15 to 20 parking spaces, and you would prob, this, frankly, this whole renovation project would probably fail and the building will remain vacant. So I hope you will support this as the police chief and fire chief and others have done.
Are we all satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to open up to the floor? Anybody? Okay, closing it to the floor, back to the board?
I just had one more question here.
Go right ahead, yep.
The intersection that Dennis brings up to me is, by my standards, one of the worst in town, because you have to keep on inching up, inching up, checking both ways, checking forward, and then checking over from Bemis. Is there any way that you could be dealing with the people at that corner intersection to knock those shrubs down?
That's actually a zoning violation, and we've brought that up. And again, sorry, not to, I even ran out the mark, we brought this up in our conversation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Adams.
No, there is a provision in the bylaw that if you own a corner lot, that your shrubberies or fences can't be more than two feet high or whatever, so you can see over them. That's private property, it's not our property, that...
Right.
The town would have a right, I think, to go there and say, zip them down. That, I would assume, is going to be certainly one of the conclusions of the road safety audit, that something has to be done at that corner with those shrubs.
I don't have a problem if that happens, because that, I mean, to me, that's serious.
That's number one easiest thing that could be done in five minutes.
And that makes a, a big safety issue from the board's standpoint.
All right, what a complaint, I'll take it.
Yes, Tom.
Hold on, right now.
All right, so I think we've kicked it around enough, we've had a very long conversation, I think we're all satisfied, so anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion on the petition of, how am I saying this, Shaq Yumuni?
Shaq Yumuni.
LLC 150 Farm Street Dover for a special permit under 17538E to allow for nine-foot wide parking spaces at 10 Railroad Street. The property is located on assessors map 53, lot 117 in the CBD.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Thanks for your time, gentlemen. Hopefully, we'll get this project rolling very quickly so that they can do a lot of renovations.
Good luck.
Thanks.
And that has no bearing on the system, source system?
All the water and sewer.
No bearing. Do you have anything? Okay.
The Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Chris and Michelle Mayburger, 398 Ashland Street, Abington, for a finding per Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, an appeal of the building inspector's decision to build single-story 16 by twenty-four and a half addition to an existing structure, left-hand side of existing office building at 398 Ashland Street, 17569, property located on Assessor's Map 8, Lot 72, in the highway commercial zone.
Hi.
Hi there.
Let's see, any bearing sale? Let's see. No bearing on the source system? How you doing? Okay. What do you got?
Actually, what he just said, my name's Chris Mayburger, my wife is Michelle. We currently reside at 398 Ashland Street. We have a personal residence there, as well as a second building on the lot that houses our dog kennel, daycare and boarding. We're just looking to, overrule, if so to speak, the building inspector's ruling that we cannot build an addition. We want to build an addition on the left-hand side of the, what we call the office building out in the back of the property. Sorry.
I think we had to go out and get the surveyor and provide you with all of the paperwork and for us to go through that process and...
The structures, pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
And what they're proposing does not increase an existing or create a new non-conforming.
If it was a one and two family, they would be entitled to a building permit, but it's not a one or two family. Therefore, it is, anything that they want to do, increasing the size, requires a finding from the board, that it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And what they're proposing is not. And unfortunately, we have to go through this exercise. If they were intensifying an existing non-conformity, then there'd have to be a finding and a special permit from your board. And if they were creating a new, then it would be a variance. But because it's pre-existing non-conforming, and it is not a one or a two family, and this leads us back into the Gail v. Gloucester and Dedrick Chatham case, et cetera, all they're looking for is a finding, which I feel is appropriate in this case. They're not creating any new non-conformities. It's just you have to look at it and say, yep, we're putting on this six-by-twenty-four addition on the left side of the structure.
The only question I had on your decision here or thought process, you're going to be like, how many feet from the property line to your?
Yeah, what is the footage on that?
Uh, there's, there's
Looks like you're right, two feet?
Is it forty-two?
The existing building
Yes.
On the right-hand side borders the, the property line, but the addition is going on the left-hand side.
Right.
Which leaves us, I'm not sure if it's thirty-something feet or to the
No, it doesn't look like it on this plan you have here.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's very far from that.
I don't see a number there.
Very far from the fence line.
Yeah, it doesn't come anywhere near, at, at approach.
Forty to this, you're right on the line.
Does it?
Oh, no.
Then
You're looking at something.
I think somebody else looked at it too and had that confused as well, as of where, where is that?
Okay, then I feel better.
Yeah. No, we have actually parking area over there.
See, what I'm saying, this is the addition right here, that's existing.
This is the addition.
Okay.
This is the existing structure.
Okay.
And this is, it's like a six-by-twenty-four addition.
Sixteen, I think, sixteen.
Sixteen, is that what that says? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's drawn on here.
I, I get it now.
They're way off.
Yeah, it looks kind of strange on the
The other thing is that this was a residential area at some time in the past, and then they, somebody allowed it to be, become commercial, the two buildings, you and the neighbor?
Um, in the past, I believe it always was. It's dual-zoned, res-commercial.
Well, it's an R20, uh, an R, I think it's an R20.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. The point being, it is residential now.
It's, it's still zoned.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, somebody in the past
It's HC, I believe this is.
It's HC, is it?
This is our recommission. It's just down, a little bit down, comes R20, but it's pre-existing, not, I mean, it requires a finding, and they're not
Yes.
They're not creating any new or in
Right.
Creating any existing, it's just a finding.
So, Marshall, the non-conformity is because it's a second principal building, or because it's on?
And it also appears that
It's on the property line.
Rear building is too close on the right, the front building is too close on the left, not, and we don't need to go into any identifying any more potential non-conformities in terms of frontage or anything else. It just is what it is, and it's non-conforming, and what they're proposing doesn't create anything new or, or increase any existing, so it requires a finding.
Okay.
That would be like the Deidre case, so, yes.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions.
Anybody else? Okay, can we open up to the floor, please? Anybody? Mr. Donald?
My name's David Kelly. I'm an attorney. I have an office at 45 Brantry Hill Office Park, Suite 200, Brantry, Massachusetts. I'm representing two neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Melvin Tibbetts, and Mrs. Cooney Henry. Also here is Justin Tibbetts. They are erect butters. The Tibbettses are at 38 Constitution Avenue, directly behind the subject property. It's referenced on your plan. And Mrs. Henry is at 52 Constitution Avenue, also a direct butter at the rear of the property. The finding you need to find tonight under 40A, Section 6, and I'll just, I'll just read the sentence, that's the operative sentence here. It says, "No extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the special permit granting authority, and such change, extension, alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood." So I would agree that the non-conforming structure and the proposed addition are relatively not substantial and not detrimental. If it were a counting office or a bookkeeper's office, some kind of an office, I don't think that that would be substantially detrimental. This is a dog kennel, and I presume it's licensed as a dog kennel. I haven't looked at the license, and I don't know if the license restricts the number of dogs. But this is not an office. When you, when you read the application, there's a section in the application that specifically references the existing use. There's no reference there to a dog kennel. So what I would submit, and my clients submit, is that this increase is going to intensify the use. The non-conformity of the structures, not substantial in my opinion, I think it's a relatively minor proposed addition. But the use is not a typical use. It's a dog kennel. It creates noise. There are dogs, and the abutting property is a daycare center or childcare center. In the afternoons, there's, there's noise. My clients are elderly, they're in firm, and they suggest to you that it is substantially more detrimental than a non-conforming use to the neighborhood. I have a copy of, of the applicant's website, which I'll hand out. And the last, the last page is a photograph from the website, of the rare area, you know, indicating that it's a dog park, dog resort, dog kennel, whatever you want to refer to it as. But it's not as, it's, it's not as simple as saying it's an addition to an office. It's going to intensify the use, which is going to create more noise. So the finding you're required to find when they grant this extension of the non-conformity is a finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Constitution Avenue is a residential zone, Arc 30, I believe. The subject property is highway commercial. It's a simple factual thing. You either think intensifying this use is detrimental to the residential neighborhood behind it, or it isn't.
Thank you.
I don't know if any of my clients would like to speak. They're not required to.
Justin Tibbetts, are you supposed to speak now? That plan originally was residential, years and years and years ago. If I remember correctly, the change was given for a man that made pool games.
Ed Marier?
Yes. Then the dog kennel came in. Then the play school came in. And we listened to dogs for half of the day, and screaming children for the other half of the day. We're hoping to keep the noise level as it is, because I assume this space, at least I don't know, I assume, would be used for more dogs. That's our position.
Thank you. What else?
Eric Helskran, 12 Constitution Ave. So I am directly behind. I don't have a copy of the plans, but I did make a picture here.
Yep.
That's me. That's the existing, that's the driveway coming in. Don't even get me started on with the parking spaces. So I'm right behind them, and the noise from dogs is terrible. The noise from people screaming at the dogs is just as bad. What really does it in for me is when my children, six, eight, and nine, are getting yelled at on their playgrounds, because being on their playground, the dogs see them, and the dogs go out of control. This is the view from kids' creative playthings. As you can see, the stuff there, the buildings, the structures there aren't even finished.
So is your property higher? Is it at higher elevation?
Is it decked?
This is, uh, from the kids' playground.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's like four or five feet looking in.
What are we looking at? Looking at?
This is from my kid's playground in the backyard, looking over.
That's looking down into the dog area?
Yeah, and it's from a creative, I think, so it's, the deck is like this high. And it's still solid fifty, twenty feet from the property line. But, yeah, but you can see, so anytime they're up there, dogs go nuts, and everybody's getting yelled at. And that's not good.
Right.
And just, you know, generally, the noise is just a bit, it's going to be a detriment to the, to the entire neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Do you want that picture back? Just let them, just let them look at it, and they can take it back. Go on.
There's constitutions, and this is right here.
Keith, I'll grab the second page.
Your house, sorry.
So my house is right here. Playground is right about at that blue spot, right there.
Blue spot. And, and this is the, this is the kennel.
The kids, kids get up and play.
That's his house, and the blue spot is the playground.
Yeah, so here's my house, here's the playground right in here.
Hmm.
And then, just the whole, the property line comes back here, and, yeah, that building is right on the property line.
That's where they want to add.
This is the kennels. This is all kennels.
So what's your name again?
Eric Helskran.
Thank you.
You, you keep that for, 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 for. All right, anybody else? Okay, we're close to the floor. Bring it back to the board.
Are we able to speak too, or?
I actually have a question for the African. Right, exactly.
Is that going to be, is that what you're proposing to use this additional structure for, is to have more dogs?
What I'm hoping to do is have the additional structure, because what ends up happening is, we have the dogs, they're out playing, but we're able to have another playroom. That's literally what we're looking to do, so that they're able to come in for a playroom. Starts raining out, whatever the case is, weather-related, we have another playroom that they're able to come in and be inside. So it's not like we're looking to add to what we have, but the space-wise, it's, right now, it's a thousand square feet inside for them to be in. So again, weather-related, whatever the case is, they're able to come in and play indoors, as well as be outdoors. It gives us more options. I have a very small parking lot, so it's not like I can just keep growing and growing. We don't, as he was just proposing over at the old R building, hundred and something parking spaces. We probably have four or five, because my employees park, and I can't expand it that much more on that side. It's literally for the playroom and to give us more space inside.
And I'm assuming the kennel's licensed by the town?
Yes.
And is there anything in the licensing provision about the number of dogs you can have in terms of?
For over, we can have twenty-five, up to twenty-five dogs sleeping overnight, for overnight kenneling.
How about for the day? Is there anything?
I haven't been regulated on that. I only do what my yards and my staff can handle.
And so you're not anticipating expanding that use at all in terms of among?
No, I, I've been told that for town of Abington, it's, for overnight kenneling, it's up to twenty-five.
You can condition it.
And on average, how many dogs you, do you have a day?
So you figure, for the boarding side of things, we always maintain that for daycare, for the overnight boarding. You know, there's never any, any overnight borders over the twenty-five.
We're not always at twenty-five, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, no, absolutely not. But for daycare, obviously, I mean, we're going to average, I'd say we probably average about forty a day.
Okay.
Did you say thirty or forty?
Thirty, thirty-five to forty is our average for daycare, yes.
I suppose we would ask, do you envisage it's going to be more than forty with this?
I'm not looking for it to, I'm looking for it to be more user-friendly. What we've done in our playyards is made it as user-friendly as possible for the dogs. We have artificial turf, so it drains well with regards to, obviously, them urinating and going to the bathroom. We've tried to expand the gate yard so that we have proper sizes in our yards. I have, I think somebody had posted something with regards to the, to the, the sounds and things that they hear. We have the different dogs in the different yards with their activities. We conform during a business day. I actually have the dogs nap for a few hours, so someone had said that they listen to kids for half the day and dogs for the other half. But again, the dogs are coming for daycare, and they're just like kids, are excited. We have a girl that's in every playyard trying to chaperone and supervise. With regards to, unfortunately, my neighbor that abuts us, my main manager has gone out in, in a very nice way, as, and it happens quite often, unfortunately, the kids are kids, and they get up on the play structure and they see the dogs. And they love the, hey, guys! And they'll yell to the dogs. Well, what do dogs do? They bark. So my manager, Jamie, will come on quite often, say, guys, please don't throw things over to the dogs, you get them excited. And they have told us quite often that their dad hates dogs. And unfortunately, we abut each other. So we're as respectful as possible, especially on weekends, because again, we know that his dad's home, he hates dogs, the kids are up there, and we are as respectful as can be. But unfortunately, their kids, his children's structure is right there at the gate, and kids love dogs. So we do what we can, and we try to say to them, please, guys, don't throw anything over, don't get them going, but they do. So I've never heard my manager yell at the kids, other than, guys, please don't yell at the dogs.
Can I ask, if it rains, where do the dogs go? Do you have an inside place to bring them in?
Uh, when, yeah.
If it rains?
They come inside, but then obviously, it's not as, um, they're not able to spread out and really play and everything. It's more, being more contained, because it's a small indoor facility. We have multiple rooms. It's set up like a little ranch house. So again, if we had, let's say, all of a sudden, I, just last week, I remember the, the sky opened up for a good ten minutes, and everybody had to come running in. So we're able to get everyone situated. We have different rooms, but it's not an ideal. Let's say it rained for four hours straight. Having another playroom would still make it a daycare day for the dogs in a very more contained setting. And that's why we've been looking to do the extension.
I got one question. Did you meet with the neighbors at all to discuss your plans?
No, but at the same time, we've never heard any complaints since we've been there, other than
Have you thought of making a higher fence?
The fences are eight feet tall, stockade fences.
They're already, but I mean
No, they're stockade six foot.
Yeah.
They're six-foot stockades.
But my point is, to keep the kids from looking in, type deal?
Kind of a buffer zone, maybe shrubbery or something on the outside?
There's, there's shrubbery between the fence and his house, just maybe not quite tall enough.
Yeah, their, their, their play structure is really high, so it kind of, they look and look right down at the eight-foot stockade, right over it.
How many years you been in business?
We've owned it for four years, but Happy Dog was existent there since 2002.
Wow.
And in terms of the, the addition that you're building, have you consulted with anybody about any type of, like, soundproofing material that you could utilize or anything
The yard is for the outside?
For the building.
Oh.
No.
No, but I don't think, again, when they're inside, and it's, we have chaperones for all the dogs. It's not like they're just, you know, thrown in there and told to be good, and, which they never would be. If they were inside playing on a rainy day, I have staff that's with the dogs in groups, so like, there's little dogs that hang out in one room, and there would be, again, having this extra room, let's say, on a bad day, it would be a contained group of one in one room. And then we have another playroom. That's a, what's the, what's the size of that one?
I have no idea, fifty, twenty-five.
Yeah, something like that. So now, it would be more contained where they'd be inside on a, on a ugly rainy day.
That part of the addition, that part of the building, would also be further away from the neighbors than the rest of the building. It's almost actually moving away from them.
Yes.
Okay, so, so basically, what we're talking about here is, you want to put this addition on for more room for the dogs, but you're not talking about expanding your, your business?
We're not going to go out and advertise to get more dogs because of putting the addition on, no.
And, and besides, I mean, And, and besides, I mean, that's...
Pretty much maxed out, isn't it?
Right, and, and this is TV, this is live, so I mean, there may be someone coming out and taking a look, too, so just keep that in mind. I mean, um, uh, you really need to work with your neighbors here, that's for sure. I mean, you're gonna have to do something for the neighbors.
The only neighbor, yeah.
I wasn't aware of anybody that was un, unpleased except for Mr. Eric.
Well, they have a lawyer here, um, they're unpleased.
I get that, yeah.
Um, what we see right here is, and you're explaining to us, that the addition is for the dogs that you have now, not to expand your business.
Correct.
And that's, that's what we're focusing.
We have several people in the neighborhood who actually bring their dogs to us that live right there.
Yes.
All right.
What would your, um, your, your thoughts, I guess, be if, if there was this, the special permit was granted upon the condition that you...
Finding, finding.
I'm sorry.
It's not when, conditions on a finding.
We can't condition a finding?
I don't believe so.
Aren't they looking for a special permit under one seventy-five sixty-nine?
No, I believe it's a finding.
We're just...
Yep.
I thought they had two.
No, it is a finding, we have, there's no permit.
Strictly a finding?
Right.
Yeah, I was surprised to see one seventy-five sixty-nine listed in the advertisement, but there's no language attached to it.
Is there, um, some noise is obviously...
Do you want me to read that out?
Is there a way that we can reduce the noise?
I know they already do a very good job of trying to reduce the noise. It's hard to get a dog knocked to bark when he wants to, particularly in the mornings, I know, weekdays, we open at seven, it'd be better if it's open at six, because we could get more people looking in that need to go to work earlier, but we don't, we don't take, we've taken into consideration the neighbors on that morning, you know, trying to get, we get the dogs out at seven on weekday, knocking up at eight on a weekend. Just trying to keep that down, but as soon as they hit that door, their first time off the door, they're gonna wanna run and, and they're barking a little bit, we're trying to keep them down, and, yeah, the girls have to be a little vocal in order to be, to keep the vocal of the dogs down, you know?
I think, I think there, I, if I had to say, the loudest time that they probably are, is probably more on the nine to eleven, because again, in dog daycare, the reason why a lot of people bring their dogs to work, for two reasons, the social, to burn that energy, or if they work long days, and obviously, the dog is going to be able to get out. So what normally happens is, from seven to eight-thirty, people are dropping off, getting to the commuter rail, whatever the case is, dogs are going out, mingling, and I'd say by nine o'clock or so, we start to have the majority of our guests there. Well, the girls' job is to kick it up and play with them, let them burn their energy, and the ball is getting thrown, and they're out having a great time. And then by eleven, eleven-thirty, they're, it's quiet, they should be pretty as quiet as can be, 'cause they've burned it. And that means the girls have supervised them well, done their jobs, but some of them, you can have a Tuesday could be quieter than a Wednesday, because Wednesday's crew is a little more rowdy and a little more excitement. But everybody's job is to do their very best to keep them to a minimum.
Why don't you...
Am I able to address the neighbors and kind of ask?
I would strongly recommend that requirement.
Yeah, I mean, now, or, or, no, not now.
No, I mean, down.
What happens tonight, I would strongly, strongly recommend that you work with them, because you, you need to get along.
Absolutely.
Right.
What about a fence? What about, Rich mentioned a fence, and you, well, what about...
Well, again...
A stronger fence?
In the rear of the yard...
There's only one that abuts us, that, that's right there, and that's the, the mister, I forget his name, that just came up, and his children's playground is there.
But the other people can hear, too.
Right, the other people in the back.
I'm not sure where they are.
Which is, it's gotta be seventy-five to a hundred feet from my fence, from, from the rear fence of the dog yards. Now, we got, we got about three quarters of an acre of land there.
Right, oh, so, but do the dogs go out to that loud?
No, no, they're, like I said, it's about a hundred feet from the back of my property, probably, to begin on the dog yards.
Still, I mean, forty dogs, um, twenty-five dogs in the house and forty dogs outside, that sounds a little bit loud to me.
It can be, sure, if they're all going at the same time, yeah.
And presumably, more accommodation would actually give them more room to, um, you know, to, to go, if you're talking about inside, that they'd be inside. But do you think it would help if you had, um, um, a higher, stronger fence, or what kind of fence do you have?
It's a six-foot stockade.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of that eight-foot.
Isn't that eight?
No.
Oh, six-foot.
No, we, we can't, we can't make, do anything on that part.
Does that really reduce the noise?
So we're gonna get, we're gonna get back to, um, what we originally came here for.
There's a finding requested here as to whether the, is going to be, not be substantially more detrimental than the existing use or structure to the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's what's being asked.
All right, so we need to make a, a decision here on this. Again, thank you, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you, sir. Um, uh, let's make a decision here, okay? Anybody wanna make a motion? Or discuss it?
So, I feel, um, the neighbor's points are, are valid, I'm not sure I'd, I'd want thirty, forty dogs in my locus barking away, but that exists now. If the owners are true to their word and they're not expanding to fifty dogs or, or more, um, and, and the proposal is really just to create additional indoor space for the dogs and not, again, for business expansion purposes, I don't have a, um, a problem with this. So I guess that's where I'm sitting on this.
And I think you really need to work with your neighbors, obviously, they're here for a reason, um, that's all I have to say on that.
No, I agree, I mean, if it was just in terms of the use, as you said, then it's existing as it is now, I mean, they're not, they're not changing it. I would love to condition this in, in terms of, that there be no expansion of the business or set a limit in, in terms of the amount of dogs they could have during the day, but it doesn't appear we have the authority to do so, so we're just relying on you to be a good neighbor and work with your neighbors and do what you can in terms of...
Well, we recognize that we, that we are located in a residential area, so we most definitely do.
Hold, it's close to the...
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's close to the floor. Um, so do we wanna make a motion?
On the petition of, um, Chris and Michelle Mayberger, three ninety-eight Ashland Street, um, for the finding for Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six, referencing one seventy-five sixty-nine, um, in regards to the appeal of the building inspector's decision to build a single-story sixteen by twenty-four and a half addition to the existing structure on the left-hand side of the building at three ninety-eight Ashland Street be approved.
I'll second. All favor?
Aye.
And can this be appealed? Marshall, can this be appealed?
Yeah.
Yes, this, uh, this will go in twenty-one days, in twenty days down to the, uh...
Yeah, but it'd be appealing your appeals, so that would go to the state level, wouldn't it?
Are you appealing the fi, finding?
Yes, no, it's appealing...
No, I, uh, I refused, and, uh, they got, they have received the finding. The finding now would be put down at the, uh, put down to the clerk's office, and then they could appeal that.
Okay.
The finding, because there was nothing. They came and got it.
All right.
That could be appealed, twenty-one, twenty days down to the clerk's office, I believe.
So it's not always, it takes a while to get to the clerk's office to see an O?
Well, it could be a week or whatever, whenever they can get it, it can get typed up and signed and down to the clerk's office and stamped in, and that's when the clock starts ticking.
Okay, again, I really think you need to talk to your neighbors and try to work it out.
Is that something we do now, or we get information?
Whatever, you want to, but we're all set here, you can, we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Christopher O'Neill, seventy, Diane Circle, Abington, for a variance under one seventy-five fourteen to allow one common driveway for two proposed single-family homes on nine-point-four acres of land, a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five to work within the local floodland protection, wetland protection district, floodplain, wetland protection district, and waiver of environmental impact statement at forty-one Orchard Lane, property located on Assessor's Map twenty-nine thirty-seven, lots thirty-four, forty-four A in the R twenty zone.
And this has, let's see, uh, proposal subject to system development fees, must be paid prior to building sign-off. I just wanna say that I live on Diane Circle, I've never met you guys before.
Oh, hi, how are you?
I'm on the other side, so, I, I've never met you before, so just wanna make that clear to the board and...
Okay.
...clear to everyone, um...
And just to be clear, that's where Chris lives, that the property we're talking about is not on Diane Circle, so...
Oh, yeah, no, that's, yeah, so just saying, I just wanna mention that...
Right, thank you.
I live on Diane, Diane Circle.
You haven't been over for a barbecue?
No, I'm telling you, I never visit, I never visit that side.
Yeah, it's two different worlds. It's not a cer, it's not a circle.
That's not a circle.
It's the strangest thing in the world, dude.
Okay.
Sorry, Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street. With me tonight is Chris O'Neill, to my immediate right, and his brother Greg O'Neill, to my far right. Under Chris's name, the O'Neill brothers have filed this petition here with the zoning board for property up behind forty-one Orchard Lane. I, I know we've submitted plans to you, along with the application, to give you a kind of a bird's-eye view and eyeball, but if I could just read out the, the brothers, Chris and Greg O'Neill, propose to construct two new homes for each of their families on a nine-point-four acre parcel of land. A single driveway would be constructed from Orchard Lane to the private homes, which would be set back approximately over six hundred feet from Orchard Lane. A variance would be needed, however, to allow one shared driveway. The lots otherwise comply with all other zoning dimensional requirements. One lot would be two-point-five acres, the other one would be six-point-nine acres. Without the driveway variance, the O'Neill brothers would be required to construct either two separate six-hundred-foot driveways, one for each house, or a public road that would go out back and could be up to a five-lot subdivision. Due to the presence of wetlands and ledge, which is shown on the plan, the cost of the two driveways or a roadway would be significantly higher than the cost of a single driveway. A driveway variance would also require less disturbance and replication of wetlands. If the variance and special permit are approved, the applicant will then file a detailed driveway and wetland mitigation plan with the Conservation Commission for their review and approval. Um, just so we're clear, we, we're here under section one seventy-five dash fourteen, and the relevant provision says, "For any residential dwelling unit, the driveway access to all principal buildings shall be from the same location on which the required lot frontage is located." So basically, a driveway has to connect to the street within your frontage, okay? The O'Neill brothers have two completely conforming lots, they have frontage, they have lot width, they have lot area, the lots conform, so they could build two six-hundred-foot plus-long driveways, but it would be a huge expense and it would look somewhat silly. What they're proposing is to have a common driveway that would lead out back the six-hundred-plus feet and then branch off into the, towards the two separate houses. But to do that, you need a variance under the terms of the bylaw, because obviously, there'd be one driveway connection to the road, so it's either one or the other frontages. Understand what I'm saying there? It seems to, in our mind, is, uh, sorry, conforms to all the variance standards, owing to the circumstances relating to soil conditions or topography of the land, there's a large swath of wetlands that you have to cross in order to get to the buildable area, again, it's a nine-point-four acre parcel. So you're going to go in and fill wetlands and replicate wetlands. We would like to minimize that by using one driveway, but a variance is needed from this board to minimize the wetland disturbance. Literal enforcement of the bylaw would create substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. I think it's pretty blatantly obvious that building two driveways through wetlands is more expensive, if not twice as expensive, than one driveway. And desirable relief in the form of variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or derogating from the intent of the bylaw. It's certainly not gonna substantially be a detriment to the public good, if anything, it's going to be more in conformity with some of the other lots. We're not gonna have two driveways running next to each other where that really, frankly, doesn't exist up in this area of Orchard Lane and Broad Meadow. Greg lives on Broad Meadow right now, he'd like to relocate to this area off of, technically, he'd have a driveway, he'd have an address of Orchard Lane. Um, it, you know, this, this variance actually allows them to build less, less pavement, less houses, the two houses, instead of building a roadway out there. We would hope you would approve this. I know that, um, Mr. Maybe is here, who owns the, the property out front, that we'd be building out back, I won't speak for him, but I know he is here and he's in support. I did submit plans that show you approximately where the driveways could be located. I would submit to you that your approval, if you were to be inclined to approve this variance, and I hope you would, and the special permit, would be subject to, obviously, the direction and the approval of the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission may dictate exactly where they want that driveway to line up, so what I show you here is an artist's rendering of it. Obviously, it's gotta go across it to get to the open area out back, and you see, it's a significant open area out back. So we can't go to Conservation, however, until we get feedback from you as to whether you want us to build two driveways or one driveway. I think, for the reasons we've stated, we conform and satisfy the requirements of a, of a, of a variance. It is, the topography and the wetlands have become the issue that creates the financial hardship, and the one driveway is in conformity with the other lots in, in the neighborhood. It would frankly look nicer, this is an example where a variance makes it a better finished product. We're open to any questions, if you have any questions, Greg, Chris, and I are here to try to answer it, but I hope you'll, uh, support their petition.
Well, there's, there's one question. How come, you know, you, you're asking for this here, and you're giving us three little pitches, um, how come we didn't get a large pitch, a large drawing?
A large plan?
Yeah. Every, every proposal you bring in front of us has a large plan, so we can actually read it, uh, it's kinda tough to read this one.
Well, it's simply, it's not a, the details of the dimensions of the lot or whatever are not at issue here, I think it was really more of the number of driveways, I, I...
Well, I just see that you have, you have, you know, three different setups here, where you could, where you could, uh, build a, can build a, what, one, two, three, four, five lots, or two driveways, or one driveway?
Right, that was to try to show you, I'm, I'm a visual guy, sometimes I think it's easier to understand what we're proposing by seeing it, by looking at it, um, so the, obviously, the one driveway versus two driveways, you can see that on the plan, and I showed you, uh, just a copy of a plan that Wheatley's office had prepared if they were to go to build a street.
But it's just, it kept really kinda hard to read this one, that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, anyone agree? Am I, am I wrong?
Is there something on it that you want me to read to? I, I don't understand what you're missing.
Well, are, are you gonna come back to us when you're building homes, or no?
We wouldn't have to, no.
Wouldn't have to, because, I mean, it seems like it's gonna be a nightmare for the Conservation Commission. It really isn't, it's actually really not a lot of land to build on, right? It's, it's because you've got wetlands all around it. So this is the only time we're coming before the Conserva, the zoning board.
Yeah, unless they needed some sort of dimensional variance for some reason, which I don't foresee that, because it's such a large parcel, we should be able to keep away from the lot lines.
So it makes sense that you're just giving us, um, a diagram just of where you're putting the driveway.
Yeah.
So, so I drove by today, and it's all woodlands, there's no, there's no road in there right now.
Correct.
My question is, it's a conforming lots now.
Yes.
So to make it non-conforming, it's something that's frowned upon.
We're not making the lots non-conforming, the lots conform.
Okay, so then...
We're not changing the lots at all.
There's enough frontage for two properties.
There's enough frontage, enough lot width, there's more than...
But the hardship, I don't see the hardship here, uh, other, and you, you don't own the property at this, at this point.
That doesn't, that's irrelevant, John, we're, we have a purchase and sale agreement, which, let me, the hardship is the topography and the wetlands of this property, you have nine-point-four acres...
But right now, they're buildable lots, they're conforming.
They're conforming lots to the zoning bylaws.
Other than the expense of putting in a driveway, that is the only issue, correct?
That is, one of the elements of the hardship, now you're looking at the second version, the second facet of, financial or otherwise. Yes, there's obviously, I think we can agree that building two driveways, whether it's through wetlands or not, is more expensive than building one driveway, 600 feet plus. So financial hardship exists there. And because you're going through wetlands, it makes it more expensive, because you have to conform the wetlands bylaw, you'll have to, as you know, replicate wetlands, which there's plenty of room to do that. So the expense of doing it with two paved driveways and whatever earth movement is needed is significantly more than one driveway. I think that is an obvious fact there, an obvious factor also.
And you're putting two houses in there with one driveway?
Right.
Now, just, just to say, how do you sell that? How do you sell that?
It's not uncommon. In fact, you see it a lot with the million-dollar houses in Orwell, where they have the private driveway and then it splits off. It's, it's in agreement, it's actually put into the deed, the common driveway access easement. It's not an uncommon thing. In fact, some towns, frankly, some affluent towns, prefer those instead of roadways. Because then the homeowners are 100% responsible for the maintenance of that driveway. They own it. They, they share the plowing costs, they share the repaving costs.
I think anyway, this site is dominated by wetlands.
The front part is, yeah.
Yeah, so although it's true the Conservation Commission can order you to replicate, that's not the best way to do it. And actually, the one way of doing one road through the wetlands is, that's the least disturbance. So that's really what we would want you to do.
One driveway, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a very good project. It didn't have to be like that. You could have had two separate lots, two different owners, two...
It is two separate lots, though.
Yeah, I know, but it could be two different owners, two different contractors, right? So we're just lucky enough that we have, you actually have two lots that you own and you're doing that. I think topography is a very big issue here.
It's undoubtedly, I mean, it's, it's a wetland crossing, so it can, it triggers the requirements of a variance. And the thought of one driveway seems to be a better design for the town, the wetlands, and the owners than two driveways.
And that's its only legal access? There's no...
No frontage and no easement?
No easement or right-of-way or anything else bordering it?
What's the basis of us waiving the environmental impact statement?
Environmental impact statement, to fill that out, you would, you would ask, "How much fill are you bringing in? Are you filling in any wetlands or whatever?" I can't answer those questions until you give us feedback as to, you want one driveway or two. If you want two driveways, it's a lot more fill, it's more wetlands to be filled, it's more wetlands to be replicated. So we can't fill out that form until we get guidance from you as to where we go from here.
Okay. I personally think that two driveways is more practical than one, meaning that you have two, two properties, two houses. You need your own driveway going in. That's, that's the way I look at it. It's a huge lot.
I think you'd see it actually off of Orchard Lane. On the other end of Orchard Lane, there is private driveway with multiple houses off it already in Abington.
I mean, it was right then.
No, but it certainly hasn't caused a detriment to the town or anything. It's privately owned and privately maintained.
Again, it's two lots, and that's how, I don't know, I just don't see there's a hardship. In my opinion, there's no hardship here.
Well, John, let me, I need to push back. Do you see the wetlands?
Again, I'm talking about hardship.
Right. Do you see the wetlands?
Yeah.
And would you agree to build...
We use that issue sometimes to work for or against an issue. In this case, I still think, I'm going to stay, stay...
Would you agree that building one driveway through the wetlands would be less expensive and less of an impact to the wetlands than building two driveways?
Then why do any?
Why do any? Because it's 9.4 acres. They have the right to utilize the land.
My question is, why do any?
John, I, wow, I...
Well, you're just saying, you're giving me the way to go two, I mean, one versus two. Why not none then, if that's the case of your concern?
Well, I think you're trying to say is that there's, there's two properties here. And you, you think that the two properties should have separate driveways. Very simple, very simple.
It is, it is a big issue in Abington. The environment, the loss of our wetlands is a huge issue. And with this construction that's going on, we're constantly battling. This is a rather inventive way of doing it. I know that you're concerned about the homeowners, the future homeowners, that they may have a problem with, you know, having one driveway, and that might be an issue. But today, we have environmental problems where we're literally eradicating our wetlands. There are not many wetlands left in Abington.
No.
This is very, very serious. And I remember once Mr. Riley saying that, you know, this is, entire Abington's a wetland sometimes, right? Many people's houses are being flooded because of the construction. This is a very inventive way. And it's also not unique, and it is in Abington. There are many houses that are share roadways.
This would be less of an impact.
Yeah.
If I may, can, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, you know, keep in mind that the two, the two owners, you know, are right here in front of you. We're in agreement with it, and I understand that, you know, we're not going to be there forever. But that would become our issue in the sale. If it brought down our property value or something like that, that would in turn be our, our problem. And the other, just the other quick side, I have met with the neighbors extensively. We've been working back there for almost a year and a half now at this point. You know, the cost of two driveways, besides taking up more of the wetlands, it would then make more sense to go ahead and put in a full road and have five lots, sell off three to pay, pay for the two. Then I know the neighbors were concerned about water and filling that in.
Well, you have the right to do that, too. I mean, you showed, you showed us the third.
Right.
You showed that to us.
So we're saying it would be simpler, will have less of an impact in the, on the area. We agree to share the driveway. I mean, we'll definitely fight over who has to plow it, but but other than that, you know, on the top, I would argue it's our problem when we go to sell it, you know, if it's less attractive to a buyer.
Or more attractive, frankly.
Or more, yeah.
A secluded house with a private driveway.
That's all. And I understand what you're saying about the two driveways, I do. I just...
And just, sorry, in terms of the five lots, would they be, if they went ahead with the one driveway, they'd be prevented from then breaking up those two lots into separate lots from there?
Right.
That's all we're here to talk about.
No, I know, I'm just...
We're here to talk about the first, first, the first picture here. We're here to talk about this one driveway going into two properties.
Well, but I think, I think the reason we showed that is, is to show you that we do not want to overbuild out back.
Right, I know, we see this a lot where, where, you know, we have three different diagrams, and we really should focus on the first one.
Right. Well, the intent is to show you that we are trying to utilize the plan with the least impact. That the one driveway with two houses, as opposed to two driveways with two houses or one road with five houses.
Right, but still, we have to focus, we have to focus on, on the one driveway. That's what we're here for. We're not here to talk about five houses. We're not here to talk about the two driveways.
Right, right.
Okay, so anybody else? Marshall?
No, I think you've pretty well covered it. By right, they can put in the subdivision. By right, they can put in the two driveways. They're asking for a hardship variance to put in one driveway. Pretty well covered, I mean. The floor, I don't know.
Yes. Anybody here?
Chris Bridges, Quinlond here. I have concerns now related to the wetlands. So I actually have bought most of the wetlands in the neighborhood. There's already a problem with the amount of water that comes through there at times of the year, say spring, for example, where water doesn't drain off. Water, water kind of comes closer and closer to my home, right? And water doesn't drain, so there's a bit of pooling in my yard as a result of it. By doing a driveway straight through wetlands down, down for me, I would expect would cause backup, making matters worse for me. So I would want to see any driveway there, quite honestly. Forget about one, two, or, I mean, roadway. So that's my biggest concern. We want to talk about hardship. I would be the one that, in the whole neighborhood, probably have the biggest hardship as a result of this construction being placed. So, and I've been here two years. I know you mentioned that you've talked to neighbors. I, the first consult, and I can consult, the first notification I got was to attend this meeting, so.
Okay.
Throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Gentlemen of the board, my name is Pauline. There is at 41 Orchard Lane. I've been speaking to the O'Neill brothers since the initial thought to even build back on those lands. I personally support their, you know, desire to build one driveway as opposed to two. I think it's just common sense. You're going to be disturbing less wetlands if you're building one as opposed to two. I've owned a house that takes on water before. It sucks. The last thing I want to do is to have someone else get flooded, myself get flooded, my neighbors get flooded. So as long as they're basically following powerful the course as far as the conservation lands, the wetlands, adding proper drainage and ensuring that they're not going to make problems worse for myself and the neighbors, I'm on board for it, and I feel they've been very transparent and direct and forward about that. I know that there's been a group text between myself, my neighbors to the flat that's across the street from me, and then proceeding down towards Orchard Lane, towards Hancock Street. So as far as you, sir, you weren't involved in that, I apologize, because I've only been for about a year and a half myself. But we are trying to be very transparent and hear everybody's rights. So I really hope that if you guys do approve one, it's one as opposed to two. Thank you.
Okay, we all set? Anybody else?
Goodbye.
Well, back to the board and go ahead.
Just, Mr. Bridges brings up a common concern always about water. Water's always an issue, and it'll be an issue for Mr. and Mrs. O'Neill. Obviously, whether we build one or two driveways, it has to be fully engineered and approved by the Conservation Commission to address the issues that he did bring up and that the other one also brought up. The issue here right now is, we have a right to build two driveways through the wetlands. Legal right to do that, and we get approval for conservation. The zoning board can help us to minimize that and allow us to build one driveway with a variance. It seems to be a better plan, as I said, a lower impact plan. It makes more sense for a plan. But we, the way the zoning bylaw is written, we need this board to vote for the variance and the special permit. Thank you.
Back to the board. I don't like the idea of the one driver, I don't, but two, two pieces of property, so that's where I stand.
So I don't mind the idea, especially given the sensitivity of the, of the property they have to traverse to get to the buildable lots. You know, once again, you know, I look at, you know, prong one on, on what you need for a variance. Soil shape and topography, I think the lot hits that. This, the soil shape and topography create a hardship, given as Mr. Bergen referenced, that every time, you know, the, the town, I mean, we got the beaver on the, on the logo, you know. There's only about five people who don't have sump pumps in their, in their basements. And, and it seems every time we develop, we're altering wetlands. And most of the time, it doesn't affect people. Occasionally, it does. And I think the less we affect wetlands, the better. And I think in this instance, I would rather see a, you know, 12-foot-wide driveway, you know, or whatever, 12, 15-foot-wide driveway there than, you know, a 35-foot-wide road or, or two driveways. I mean, just, you know, I, I don't know, I think it's far enough back. 600 feet's far enough back and it does a, you know, a dogleg right, you know, so you don't really even see the houses from the street. So it's not like a standard lot where you're going to see one driveway and just two things, and you think it's like some little, some little development. So I think in general, I don't like one driveway for multiple properties. But I think also why, why we sit on this board is because every parcel is different in the town.
Can I ask, there's a point of procedure for you tonight. If the, I would hope you'd approve both the variance and the special permit, but if you were inclined not to do so, I would ask that you would approve the special permit, because regardless of whether it's one or two driveways, the special permit would be required to move forward, but it would be, as I mentioned, subject to the Conservation's direction and authority. We would hope you'd approve at least the special permit. I really hope that you also approve the variance. Thank you.
So special permit is, is permission to work
Right.
in the Flood Plain Wetland Protection District and waiver of the environmental impact statement. That's what you're referencing.
Andrew?
No, I agree with Mr. Mullin. I think it meets a condition for a variance, so I'd be inclined to grant one in this case. And I mean, given the neighborhood, it's not uncommon in that neighborhood to have shared driveways as well, so. But I think the mitigation to the wetlands would be beneficial.
See, I don't agree with that, because they're both conforming right now. So they are, they meet the topography shape. So the only thing now, it's a financial issue. And for the longer driveway, in my opinion, it's not a hardship.
Dennis, Mr. Bergen?
Well, I don't have a vote, but for the variance, we have four issues. So circumstances relating to soil conditions and topography. I think it's obvious that topography is a big issue here. It's really a wetlandlocked area, not affecting the general zone. I think they're mitigating, trying to do as little, small is beautiful, out of trying to do as little as possible. Literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Otherwise, here is what I would emphasize, not financial so much. I mean, it is costly to do a second road, but for the greater good, it's actually costly to our environment to have a second road. And then relief without substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying the intent of the bylaw. So I, I think either of those, you can overcome that. And the special permit, so I would actually look twice at the special permit, because I think you should always do a report. But here, they are actually going straight from here to the Conservation Commission. So not injuries to public welfare, I don't believe it is that. The second one is not overload public systems. It doesn't. Parking's a good example of how it would. This is a good example of how it wouldn't. And causing undue traffic, now that might be an issue, and that's where Richie talked about, you know, every house should have its own driveway, and there might be undue traffic. But I think, you know, there's less space in our town. More and more, we're going to see houses sharing roadways. And as Mr. Riley said, it's not such a bad idea. You know, except maybe for the homeowner, because the homeowner, of course, is responsible for that road. But I think it overcomes the three special permit requirements and it overcomes your four variance requirements. That's my suggestion.
All right. Marshall, you want to throw anything in here?
No. It's all been laid out very well as to what, what's being asked for and what the options are. It's not my decision.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the petition of Christopher O'Neill, 70 Diane Circle, Abington, for a variance under 175-14, to allow one common driveway for two proposed single-family homes on 9.5 acres of land. Special permit under 175-35 to work within the F P W P district and waiver of environmental impact statement at 41 Orchard Lane.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
No.
Just for the record, are you voting no against both of them?
No, I'm not going, for the special permit, yes, yes.
Okay, so did I have the variance or approve the special permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
I have a date with my wife.
Abington Zoning Board Appeals will hear the petition of Mary Elizabeth Rourke Investment Trust, PO Box 41.
Go.
Can you just? This is going to be continued.
Oh, this one's, this one's being continued.
Oh.
Just so that if anybody's here.
Okay. Just been asked to take 30 seconds, gentlemen. Final hearing, the petition of Stephen and Karen May at 44 Cleverly Street has been continued to July 12th.
12th-ish. That's the one that the newspaper...
Missing the one ad.
Sorry, we should have said that at the very beginning.
Open it, agree to continue, I guess.
July 12th.
And then close it.
What Marshall said. Do I have to read it officially?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Our newspaper did not place her ad. She got it in, they charged her, and they did not place it.
Okay.
So it's official, all right. So on the petition of Stephen and Karen May, 44 Cleverly Street, Abington, for six-foot setback variance to construct within 35, 35-foot setback under 175-29 at 44 Cleverly Street, to be continued till
July 12th.
July 12th at 7:00 a.m. You're first on the docket. So you're in and out in no time due to legal publication, legal, legal notification issues.
So it's a motion to continue?
I'm sending out of that because I'm the question.
Okay.
All right, so...
You don't have to go for it.
We have a second for the motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. All righty. Once again, petition of Mary Elizabeth Rourke Investment Trust, PO Box 41, Abington, for a variance under 175-14 to allow access to proposed single-family dwelling at 466 Plymouth Street, Lot 3, by constructing a driveway over a budding property within an access easement, property located on assessors map 40, Lot 59, in the R30 zone.
My name is Jeff Carter, Site Tech Engineering, representing the Rock family. With me tonight is Jim Rock. And similar to the previous application, we are seeking a variance from Section 175-14 of the location and driveway access to a principal building. However, unlike the previous application, we are proposing to construct a, we are proposing to have two separate driveways to provide access to two separate dwellings. We're not asking for a shared driveway at this location. So the relief we're looking for is to be able to construct a driveway not through the legal frontage of a lot. This is an idea we've been thinking about for some time since we started doing the development out at the site. There is a, we were actually here back in October of 2017, for the overall project site to get conception from the inclusion in the Floodplain and Wetland Protection District. And at that time, there was some discussion about, you know, the real lot, which I, you know, we weren't proposing any construction at that point, but how to get access to it. So I know, although formally we weren't here for this application, there was a little bit of discussion at that meeting about it. So after looking at, in evaluating how to get access back there, what we decided to do is request a relief from the zoning bylaw, and we feel we have several good reasons for requesting that relief. First being, there is an issue with proximity, if you want me to just point it quickly. In order to meet the standard and provide a driveway access to this lot here, Lot 3, we would have to come in through Plymouth Street, in this location here, come in and make a 90-degree bend, and then basically take, continue the driveway where we have it proposed right now. In order to do that, we'd have to construct a driveway close proximity to the driveway on the budding property, which as you can see is an extremely narrow lot, the driveway is basically goes right up along the crocking line in this location here. The other reason we're kind of opposed to constructing a driveway in this location is across the street, you have St. Bridget's School and Church in that location. So this driveway would basically be coming in directly opposite of that driveway, and it would be roughly 100 and 60 feet from the intersection of Central Street, of the street, where we can handle the access. We feel that from a safety point of view, a better way to access this particular lot would be from Central Street adjacent to the driveway that's being, of the construction or, will be constructed soon to provide access to the dwelling that's on picture 2. By doing this, again, we provide more of a separation distance between the actual driveway access and the intersection. It's my understanding, we can add a, well, traffic study in the area, but it's my understanding that the traffic on Central Street is substantially less than what we put out on Plymouth Street. So we feel it's a better location for the driveway. The last issue, in terms of, the biggest issue is that the topography area, basically, goes wide, I should say, slopes down from north to south towards Central Street in this location here. By constructing a driveway that basically would cut through that slope, we'd either have to go one or two ways with that. We'd have to basically try to keep it at existing grade, so to let runoff pass over the driveway, and then the low point would be kind of where the 90-degree bend here, which during the winter could, you know, create somewhat of an issue on the driveway with ice and such. Or the other option would be to raise that up slightly and to put a culvert under the driveway, so that the stormwater that comes down from these scrap leases allowed to pass, and work its way down into, there is a catch basin that's located in this location here on the site where all this runoff comes down to, gets collected, and then gets wiped out to So we're, you know, in, in order to work in this area, there is a bit of a topography change that we would have to deal with, to construct a driveway in that location, whereas if we were to come directly in Central Street, it's basically one consistent grade going up gradient to access the, where the dwelling would be situated in our lot grid. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Didn't we just pass a bylaw on driveways?
Yeah. Driveways, one and two family uses, no driveways or parking areas shall be closer than three feet from a side lot line. So you approve this conforming driveway, I guess it is now, would be now, it would be non-conforming, and you'd have to issue a variance, because that's actually crossing the lot line. Goes from, out from the existing lot, whatever it is there in the left rear, northwest corner of that plan, that's going on to the lot of the next abutment. So that would create, would require zoning relief if you granted this.
But, but making a conforming lot non-conforming is not
Well, you're not supposed to be doing that anyway in general, is taking something that's conforming, making it non-conforming
Right.
And then granting it relief, that's not the idea. And additionally, they have taken out some language with regards to driveways in proximity to one another, which used to be pretty confusing in 175-47C, planning and zoning, et cetera. And they've put it with one and two family uses, they have taken that out, so they will be able to access on Plymouth Street without any relief. And I don't think
Plymouth or Center?
Well, coming down the long way, the way they don't want to come down. And, and coming into, in front of St. Mary's there, I guess it is, or whatever.
Bridget.
Bridget's, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, so I, based on this new bylaw, 175-47B, one and two family uses, no driveways or parking areas shall be closer than three feet from a side lot line. If you granted the request, you'd be making it non-conforming and then requiring a variance.
We're, we're asking for a variance.
Yeah, and requiring, making it more non-conforming.
Yes, so no variance.
And you'd need two variances, the one you're requesting, and as well as another one, because you're more than, closer than three feet to another lot line.
Are you saying where the, where the driveway would actually cross over the, the lot line? You'd need a variance for that as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because based on this, so
They just changed the law.
Yeah.
When was that changed?
April.
And
Last month.
The 21st, I think.
21st of
Effective as a passage?
I told as, I was disappointed to hear this, as of the end of that meeting, it's in effect and, and it remains in effect until the AG says it's not in effect.
Really?
Which I was very disappointed in, because I wanted them to say, the old ones are in effect until the Attorney General ratifies them. But
That's been something a couple years now.
Yeah, to make it more confusing and more billable hours for attorneys, they do it this way.
Now, was that the, you say last month, and then you said April, was it 21st?
Well, it's our town meeting.
Town meeting.
In April.
No.
May 21st.
May
His application was filed prior to
What's that?
The application was filed prior to that.
I don't know, I could double-check that with counsel.
But it's still
Well, we still have the law, is the law, it doesn't change.
He's claiming that he's maybe filed the building permit before, or filed something before
If an application is filed before a zoning change, we can't be held to a new standard that wasn't in effect when we filed
You still would be, because it's conforming going to non-conforming regardless.
I don't
The bylaws at the time of filing
I would have to
I think we need to talk to town council on this.
I would have to defer to counsel with regards to that. I don't know the answer.
We don't want to make a decision tonight and
I know that that's true with what you're saying with building code, with zoning, and there is no application per se, there is to build the house, but there isn't to place a driveway.
I mean, that goes for any application before any board, I mean, you can't be held to a standard that's not in place when you file an application.
You're a counselor, I'm not gonna stand here and debate it with you, because I'm not trained in that, but I'm also not gonna accept it and advise this board until I have confirmation from our counsel. That's what I would advise the board, because I don't know the answer to that.
Right.
That's both the start date, but I think the actual deciding issue is when the board actually makes its decision. That would be, I think, I think you are, because it's the law, if the law changes at the time, it's, I know there's constitutional issues, but I, I think you are still tied to whatever the law is.
Well, in all actuality, it's, it should be from when the lot is created, what, what zoning regulations are in effect when the lot is created.
No.
No.
I don't know the answer.
That we're pretty sure.
Yes, I mean, that would be, I've dealt with this on a number of occasions.
Well, maybe it could be, I mean, I've
Yeah, that's
It's, it's, it's for counsel.
Sure.
Who defend us in court would be, defend you in court would be the one to guide, he may well be right. And I feel sorry if he is and that we've held him up, but I wouldn't advise you to do that, because he's here to advocate on behalf of his client, and that's what I'd be doing if I was here as well. And he may well be saying, but I don't know that. We don't know that.
Am I wrong in hearing you, Marshall, that it seems like the applicant actually, if he's interested in coming in off of Central Street, needs to ask for two variances?
Assuming that
Assuming that's the route
Granted it, you're accessing a lot where you do not have frontage, that's one, and you're more closer in this new bylaw, not closer than three feet from a side lot line, you're actually crossing the lot line.
So that's what we're seeking?
That would be the second relief that would be required, in my opinion. I mean, I've never been through this before.
Never had one like that.
But it must be a common issue, where you file things and the laws change while you're doing
He's saying he's been through it before?
And you've been through it before.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem if you want to look into it with town council, because certainly I don't think you're gonna take my word for it, and I feel more comfortable if you get an opinion on it.
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, if, I'm not so concerned about that, it's, it's what we actually requested in the, in the application. If we're not allowed to access off of Central Street to get to the slot, the, the second issue is a moot point.
Right.
You know, so there's no sense stringing this out, if, you know, if we're not gonna be allowed to access off of Central, because then that, you know, the three feet, you know, three feet wouldn't be a problem with, other than crossing over the lot line with the proposed driveway that we have.
Right.
I'd simply pointed out that the abutting property, which, again, they wouldn't be held to the new standard, because it's pre-existent, non-conforming, you know, their driveway is basically right on the property. You know, by constructing, again, just by constructing another driveway, you have the same line that will come through the driveway, and you have a spore coming down from this part of the mountain, that would cut across here, and to construct a driveway in there, again, you gotta, you'd have to raise that driveway up, put a culvert underneath it, and then the upgradient abutters are kind of at the mercy of the property owner to maintain that culvert, in order to avoid any potential drainage problems from the water, stormwater coming down through the properties. If the culvert fails, if it gets clogged for whatever reason, you're looking at potential backup.
Right.
I've also dealt with that in other circumstances, and that does become problematic, especially in a situation like this, where it's on a closed road, you're talking about a private driveway.
Right. Those are two driveways, right? Two driveways?
Two, two separate driveways.
Yep.
And the other thing I'd like to point out, too, is that, you know, where these driveways, you know, one is the conforming driveway to Lot 2, the second driveway would be here, this is the applicant's property, this, the next house to the east of that is also the applicant's property. So the location of the driveways, for the section of the driveway that we're actually seeking relief for, the only abutment that, that would agree would be the applicant. We're actually moving it further away from any of the abutters here.
Yep.
You know, I'm sure if you were to ask the abutters, I know there's a few here tonight, and they could probably speak to this better than I, but given the choice, they'd rather see this situation, as opposed to having a driveway come in off of Plymouth here, and potentially cut off their, you know, this strategy stormwater overland, force it back to their property, and have a driveway in close proximity to their property.
You can't do one driveway, huh? Don't hit me.
So basically, you want to know what we, what our thoughts are on your initial application?
Yeah, on Section 175-14.
Can we hear from the, do we have public?
I was just gonna say, we could
Well, my, my question is, should, should we
We could rule on this.
And
If your intention
Town lawyer?
If your intention is to entertain 175-14, then you're going to have, you're gonna have to extend to the next meeting. If you're going to deny, just deny, and it's a moot point. That's, I think, what you're saying.
I mean, there's no sense in waiting a month for a denial, if, if we don't get 175-14, 175-46, is that what it is?
47.
47, it's pointless.
B, A, 1A.
We could always condition the
Then if that's the case, then we should look into the abutters.
We could condition the variance, or if we wanted to grant the variance, we could condition it on an opinion from town council, whether or not he needs to come
If you decide that way.
Okay.
But you're creating a hardship.
We should listen to the abutters anyway.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's listen to the floor.
Jeff Carter, foreface of Plymouth Street, and I just want to say I'm glad to hear that you're considering the drainage issue. Not only is there a catch basin, and I printed this out at the last meeting, but I don't know if any of you have ever gone over the area, and I know it's on The catch basin, I think you referred to, is up, is up around here.
Yeah, it's right there.
That's it, right, okay, that's what I'm saying. It's concrete wall, it's not a concrete wall, it's a culvert, okay, it's got two great big holes in it.
Okay.
And, there's only one reason, I was in the Army Engineer Corps for a while, and I tell you what, there's only one reason you have a wall in the ground with two big holes, it's a culvert, right? And we all know that. So I, I've seen this, I mean, I have the water come through my yard and go right down, this is my, actually, this is my lot here, right, so the water comes right along, actually comes along to the little points, and goes right to the back of my yard, and goes right down into this small lying area, and it goes, it just, you know, it goes into the ground, I don't know, but I think some of it goes in here, some of it goes in there, whatever, this is all great place for the water to just sink in, and I think, if a driveway comes in through here, we are gonna be flooded out with this, so I'm, I'm all for putting the driveway out that way.
Okay.
And also, you've got, you've got, I've lived across, I've been here 19 years, St. Bridget's comes out, and so I've had three people went over trees on my lawn, they come out of that park, and I
Oh, really?
I had a woman step on the, to accelerate it, she touched her step on the brake.
Oh.
I've had, can that's Officer Carter, he's been on my lawn twice, not recently, but they come right out, and I had a woman swerve to avoid somebody coming out of St. Bridget's, she went up over the lawn, drove right over my lawn, drove over my saplings, and then she kept on going, she was like, please, like just
So you live right across there, that's your house?
You cannot have a driveway coming out of here, I mean, you can, but it's gonna be, it's a
It's gonna make a disaster.
It is, and the drainage issue, so
Are you Mr. Carter, is that right?
Yeah, Mr. Carter. I really, you know, we don't like, we don't, obviously, I'm a driveway, driveway along here, really.
Right, along your house.
But, I mean, it's bad enough, it's gonna be back here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Little Point?
Joel Point, I live 438 Plymouth Street, my parents live at 430 Plymouth Street, I've lived here all my life. There is a major drainage issue coming through the yards, and if there was a driveway there, it would be a major, major issue. As far as the driveway going out here, I have no problem, it actually gives us a 20-foot buffer, otherwise it would be right on the property line. I have in-ground I have an in-ground swimming pool right there, I'd rather have it away than, you know, if the cars driving right behind the pool, the kids playing. As far as the traffic, same thing's happened to me, my, my houses actually got hit from a lady leaving bingo at town park at night, driving straight across Route fifty-eight with the traffic. If you let more, you know, there was another driveway there, it would directly cross the property. You know, five o'clock, we can't even get a hand out, my driveway's over there, on Route fifty-eight.
Okay.
I know, we're all supportive of it, my other neighbors sit in front of us right in the road, we'd rather have the driveway up back.
So it would be hardship for you guys, is that what we're trying to say?
Absolutely, I mean, we would literally, this lot next to me, I've got pictures of ducks in the backyard, and I'd gradually force through my yard, my mama's yard, to Jeff's yard, to that culvert, and, you know, I don't know how you mitigate that, even putting a driveway with a culvert in there, you know, because it's just going to hit the back of the, the other side of the culvert going over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Do you have to say anything? Anybody else, Tom? Okay, all right, closing to the, you all set? Okay, closing to the floor, bringing it back to the board.
So obviously, Mary Rourke's on board with us, correct?
Yes, the agent's mother.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's one of the most ridiculous shaped lots I've seen in the town. It's ridiculously conforming, okay? Um, conforming is conforming, I get it. Um, yeah, I, I don't know, I, I would, if I was in Mr. Carter's shoes, I would, given, I would not want my, my yard ringed with asphalt, you know, given, looking at these grades where, you know, it's dropping, you know, almost four feet in, you know, whatever that traverse is, forty feet or something like that, whatever that width is.
But, and that was kind of my point, I mean, we don't have a major demographic change out there, but when you look at the topography of it, there is a bit of a hardship to try to construct a driveway across that. So unlike the previous case, we have wet ones, and we're not talking anything that drastic, but in order to construct a driveway through that slither, integrate it, you're going to have to raise it up, which, listening to the abutters, is really going to be an issue.
Just, just to add that, the last time we were in front of the board, Mr. Carter expressed the fact that he didn't want the driveway running parallel to his lot.
Yeah.
So that's why we brought this in today. We, uh, some of the, some of the neighbors also asked us if you'll notice that we've turned the houses, the two lots, we turned them, so they weren't directly looking at the house, so we did do that as well, basically, working with the neighbors and things like that. But Mr. Carter's the one that actually brought that idea to our plate, if you will, about the fact that he was opposed to the driveway coming down, I don't know, to his property line. Okay, so the access easement, that's going to be, where is that now?
On lot two.
Yeah.
So it would have to be, and it's solely on lot two, it would be in this location, basically, you look at the driveway, you know, you go out maybe three, four, or five feet, it's, I believe, twenty feet in width, what was done, twenty-five foot wide, access easement. So basically, twenty-five feet wide, if you come over, when you get beyond this property here, the driveway comes back onto lot three, crosses the property line.
Now, what are you going to do about that, now, if it's ever sold? Is this house for you, or is this, this is going to be sold, correct? It's to be determined yet, we, we probably will be selling it. So what are you going to do with that entrance property, that area? That'll be. That's going to go with the house? Correct, that'll be with the deed. I just want to make sure, because, so, so that's your property now, correct? Correct. And that's going to go with the whole, whole, okay.
Yeah, you couldn't break it up.
Well, I just want to make sure that.
The house would suddenly become nonconforming.
Exactly, so, I just want to make sure that it's.
Lot three will, potentially having easement on lot two to cross, pass and repass.
All right, so that's. Question I have here is the hardship part, I don't see one, again, it's, uh, it's a conforming lot, you would be making it nonconforming, which is frowned upon, so, again.
You don't, I'm second to it. It, the lot itself is conforming, we are not changing the lot, we're not looking to change.
Well, you would be by going on that abutting property.
Well, no, we're not, we're not changing anything conforming about the lot.
The driveway.
There's no driveway in place now, so basically.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we're, we're seeking a variance in order to.
Right.
You know, does, do, be allowed to do something that doesn't comply with the zoning regulations.
Right.
Um, but the fact, we're not making the lot itself nonconforming.
It's already, like you said.
It's ugly, what it's conforming.
It's ugly, it's, it's amazing that it's conforming, actually.
Yeah, that's not good, man.
Um, no, but the lot itself is not going to change, it's just the access to the lot that there's.
I, I would simply ask the board to consider the alternative, one way or another, you know, the house on lot two is going to get built.
It's a good point, it's a good point, the neighbors, most likely, other, the people are going to have the hardship more than, um, the building itself up back. I understand that, and it's not one driveway, which is, it was, which is a good thing.
Just saying.
Bro, we've been filmed, you know? Okay, um, any other questions, anybody? Marshall? Okay, all right, gentlemen, let's make a decision on this. Now, we have to watch out, because, again, the bylaws have changed, if, if, if we do vote for this, we might probably put a condition on that you may have to come back for another variance, correct, Marshall?
I believe so.
If it's approved.
If it's approved. Anything else to be said, boys? No? Anybody want to make a motion?
I will double check with counsel, and try and verify whether or not, um, the applicant has to comply with the new bylaws based on the kind of, the permit application, et cetera, in this situation.
I know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of nervous on that part, but like you said, that if they, we put a condition on, if they, if it does pass, um, they don't have to come in front of us again, correct?
I believe so.
Yep.
So the condition is basically that if it's determined that, um, the applicant wasn't grandfathered in?
So, so basically, in, in my position, if it is determined that that is in fact the case, um, we'd actually have to file a, a separate application for that variance. We couldn't simply do it with this, because it wasn't advertised as such.
Correct, correct, you have an ask for that.
We haven't formally asked for it, so, you know, it'd be a separate application anyways.
Right, and in essence, right, and in essence.
Yeah, so we actually would need a condition.
You're almost only a risk if you're, if it's challenged as well, right?
Well, I'm sure if, if, it'd be an issue come time.
But Marshall would go, wait, you can't, yeah.
Right, and if we can't conform with something that may or may not be in effect, then we'll simply.
We just want to make sure we cover our bases before we make any motion at all, so.
No, but to that point, he wouldn't actually need the condition, because if that bylaw is in effect, he's going to need to come back.
Marshall's going to say.
He's going to need to come back for another variance.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check, if you grant this, and he chooses to use it, and she says, yes, he has to comply with the new bylaw, then he'll have to come back, if he chooses not to use this.
No.
Relief that's granted, now, then he'd be able to use the other.
Yep.
That would put us in a position now where we almost have to grant a second variance, because.
Right.
Otherwise, it'd be a useless first.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're potentially, you're going to have to grant a variance, because you granted a variance.
Yeah, right. Cross that driveway.
But you're doing that, too, but you're doing that basically to protect the neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, in the future, I mean, with that bylaw, any granting of a variance like this is going to require, too, at that point, because at some point.
Yes.
You've got to bring the driveway onto the property.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, you're right, where we've dozens of times had people file something right before a known zoning bylaw was changed, so that they could take advantage of oftentimes more lenient definitions in regulations.
Yeah, if, if people know, like, if it's been advertised at, at town meeting, if the regulation's going to change, and they know they're going to propose something that wouldn't meet the new standard.
Right.
The idea being, they get an application, right, to the standard change, so.
We've run into that dozens of times.
Again, that's what we're talking about here, we just want to make sure we get it correct. Do we feel comfortable, gentlemen?
I will make a motion to approve the petition of Mary Elizabeth Rourke Investment Trust, P.O., Box forty-one, Abington, for a variance under one seventy-five, fourteen, to allow access to proposed single-family dwelling four sixty-six Plymouth Street, lot three, by constructing a driveway over an abutting property within an access easement.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, sorry for the driveway nightmare.
I would have voted against it.
Thank you for coming.
They want, making it nonconforming. I don't get it, but I'm done.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, before you do that, hold on a second.
Wait.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, sorry. No, 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 we're good.
Uh, let's see, before we do that, take care, uh, the purpose of the system, uh, four sixty-six, uh, Plymouth Street. Getting late, they have to pay fees prior to building.
And there, and a fire watch.
But did, did you?
What?
What?
Oh, the revised agenda?
Oh, geez.
That I had, I had written on.
I put it.
You got it?
Hold on.
Come on.
Probably in my pile.
He's throwing stuff on the floor, so. Put this, put this.
To do.
Yeah.
Mrs. May.
Yeah, there you go.
That I had written on, just, oh, okay, beautiful.
Okay, uh, where did John go?
I don't know, he had so much fun, oh, there he is.
John, you want to say anything before we, uh, kick off the night?
I'm a little stoned with that decision, but anyway.
Thank you.
I was still on, I was still on. Done here. Undone. No, I just think we've come a long way, we've still got a way to go, I'd really like to bring the training that I've got and the research that I've done from other towns, uh, again, I just want to, I think, being on a sign committee, too, and watering my house still, and the cellar, I think that just took its toll on me, and it's time to move on.